Today, this is a wrap up and report out from our civic leadership academy and presentation. So Kerry Prosser can get us started.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us today. I just want to do a little introduction of what the program was and where we are standing. So this is a partnership between Portland State University and the National Policy Consensus Center in the City of Sisters and a combination with Citizens for Community who also helped organize this. It was made possible by some grant funding from the Ford Family Foundation for our two-year cohort and from the Roundhouse Foundation. So I just wanted to make sure that we recognize those folks for helping us sponsor this and really work on that civic engagement within our city. So this is a 12-member cohort. It's two more than we had last year. A great group of humans who worked for six weeks, working on leadership and being introduced to some of the things that the city does and on a project that they're going to present to you tonight. A really great program and we are not hopeful, but we'll be bringing another cohort next year. Probably the same timeframe. So our third year next year, which will be great, working again with C4C and and some other of our partners. So I just want to hand it off. And I actually, if you guys, if you have plans to introduce yourselves, but if you do, that's great. I'll let you guys do that. Thanks so much.
Thank you and welcome to our 2025 Civic Sisters Civic Leadership Academy and Presentation. My name is Jacob Rodriguez. I'd like to present my fellow cohorts, Aiden Fought, Seth and Celine. And I would also like to introduce the rest of my cohort. You'd all raise your hands as a call unit. Amy Giondi, Anna Carlson, Brett McClure, Chloe, the two of us. Barney Joe Carter-Powell, Laura Lees, Lisa Kettle, Riley Newport. And unfortunately, we'll join us tonight, Will McDonald. It has been an absolute honor to get to know you and all of my members. I'd also like to thank Kelly Klein and Jake Paxton of Citizens for Community for helping organize this cohort. Steve Greenwood, Mary Ward, Yachi Wisco, for showing us to use different leadership skills that will help us in our professional and personal lives. I also like to thank City Manager Jordan Miller and Assistant City Manager Kerry Prosser. We appreciate your guidance and your support from all of our members. Sisters is home to a small but viable population of residents, eight, 14, and 15. They are future civic leaders, caregivers, professionals, and volunteers. Yet they remain one of the least engaged groups in our local decision making. The 2025 SCLA cohort was asked to explore the issue, how can the city support younger community members to feel more comfortable and engaged in city meetings, projects, and events? Participation in city meetings, projects, and events can include a range of activities from formal civic engagement, formal engagement with civic institutions like the city council, to form informal engagements with community non-apprentices. So it is this matter, while smaller population numbers might suggest lower civic participation among younger community members. It is essential that we engage younger community members. Civic participation at a younger age builds lifelong habits and shares policies that reflect the need for the future citizens and strengthens communities' ability to respond to emerging challenges. This is our roadmap toward important. We wanted to learn about the younger community member engagement and who are younger community members already sisters? What are the barriers to their engagement and its effects on them? We found many strategic opportunities for our young community members and have included those in our consideration for our reports. We define young community members as YCMs, as residents aged 15 to 40, in accordance to the city council guidance. We will now refer to this group as YCMs. Young community members make up approximately 22% of this population. There are subgroups within that population, 15 to 30, I mean, 14 to 19, are a little over 7% of the population. 20 to 39-year-olds are a little over 7% of the population. And we have found that 35 to 39-year-olds are a pretty solid 7%. One interesting thing that we did find was that we, there is not a way to actually gauge if there are other civic engagements within that. There's no data on it. So our report is really a lot of real-time information that is about to come in. While participants were selected through a convenience sampling approach, they represented diverse perspectives across sectors and life stages. They are students, their parents, their members of LGBTQ+ communities, their business owners, employees, renters, and homeowners. These are all of our neighbors that we spoke with as we conducted this report. Combined with the lived experience of our cohort and members, this formed the basis for identifying key barriers to civic engagement and developing strategic considerations for the city council. And we will continue with our next part of the.
Okay, great. Excellent. Thanks so much, Jacob. So as Jacob has mentioned, there's, there's a lot of different lived experiences within the 15 to 40-year-olds group of younger factors. And one of the things that we wanted to do after having spoken with them is put a little bit of structure around all of those different experiences. So we didn't come up with four representative profiles, but I'll introduce now to get a sense of who it is that we talked to. One group that emerged there were what we call busy caregivers. So these can be parents with their children, caregivers, elders, people who are just active in the community through different volunteer opportunities. Another group we called young professionals. So these are folks that are out of high school, perhaps early in their career, working one or more jobs, probably not yet homeowners, just kind of getting started in their professional life. A third group is high school students. This is your 15 to 18-year-olds. And as many of us are familiar, they're also very busy folks balancing academics, extracurriculars, thinking about college, lots of different needs. And then you have a fourth group that we call your quiet constituents, which are really representing those who are a little bit skeptical of traditional engagement spaces. It's not uninterested, but have a different contextual perspective. So what we'd like to do is share a little bit about what we've heard of the barriers across this group and we'll share the barriers to those to get a sense of how these folks are feeling about engagement in city meetings and events. And then we'll come back to these profiles to look at how those barriers manifest in the lives of individuals. So first, we've got five barriers, which you can see here on the slide, and we'll go through each of these and just share a little bit about them. So our first barriers, again, understandably, is just competing responsibilities and schedule conflicts, right? There are some people who, you know, are aware of these, but just have conflicts, whether that's with academic school activities, family obligations, caring for young children. As you can see here in the quote, many of us come on family time in the evenings, late afternoons, when kids get out. It can be frustrating to feel like that family is a perspective of the city. So just falling out of conflict in, in time and schedule. Another barrier is limited awareness of opportunities. So again, we can see here in the quote, this is a healthy number saying, I didn't know how to find out about events or meetings. When I moved here, I was excited to get involved, but I never figured out. So some kind of disconnect happening with communication. A third barrier has to do with relevance of activities and feeling that the topics that they knew about weren't necessarily engaging for their life. This is one, and speaking about students just representing the combination of relevance and time, right? If you've got busy care day, if you've got busy schedules, the subject really has to matter to your work. A third barrier relates to how people feel their voices will be responded to or received by others. There were quite a few comments around, from younger community members, feeling like their voices might be less valued. So here, no one wants to hear from a 25-year-old girl, someone who didn't care for it here, so feeling like needing to have a longer tenure was necessary to have a voice in city meetings and events. Another theme that came up repeatedly was about investment, financial investment. So even though I grew up here, I don't come home, what's our word worth if we're not actually paying to base of the city? And the final barrier is, again, is discomfort in traditional forums. You can see here on the quote, as a younger person in this community, we are often discounted as annoying or creating issues politically. Our whole mom that says so. So again, people feeling like their perspective won't necessarily be valued and a little uncomfortable voice again, and those kinds of things. So one thing that became clear when we were in doing these interviews is that many people, it's more than one of these barriers, right? It's not just one thing that keeps people from engagement. So we're going to come back to these profiles and then look at how different groups experience these and also some of the motivators they have in our interviews to say what, what might make it easier to do it. So for busy caregivers, this is actually probably one of the more straightforward cases. These are folks who know, you know, have some awareness of city events and meetings, know enough to know that it doesn't work with their schedule. And it's really just kind of a practical barrier of making it work with the other routines that they have in their life. Some of the things that came out as motivating, family-friendly events, options for childcare, meal options to reduce needing to take care of those in other, in other ways. Perhaps opportunities to engage on their own time and schedule simultaneously. And again, having topics that are really for young professionals, a few more layers to the barriers here. So again, these are folks that again have maybe multiple jobs, many jobs at non-stationary times. And so they're feeling that competition with other responsibilities. Also limited awareness, you know, and looking at different communication forums of how some of the caregivers were, and also feeling a little procedural. So for this group, things that they spoke about, creating that, or having information accessible on social media platforms to get familiar with events that address issues relative to them, things that appeal to many young people, like free food and relaxed environments and things that connect as an incentive. And importantly, at the bottom here, confidence that their input will make a real difference, right? That they're coming and that sees some for high school students, this is a particularly complex group. You can see lots of different barriers that I think almost all the ones that we went through show up in one way or another, right? They have similar schedule conflicts, but perhaps the actual time is different than that of caregivers, if their actual activities make them available later. Limited awareness, having the same barriers, patients platforms, relevance, not feeling like as a really young person, that voice will be nothing. And so some of the motivating factors here are, again, that's loaded on platforms that they'll see things that go outside of school hours, making it kind of a low-pressure, less intimidating environment. And I think some of the specific ones that came up here were just seeing other young people, the model, you know, having things that are here so that they're not the only one showing these spaces and having some kind of specific roles for teens, 40-year-olds. Young citizens. And then the last group here, again, these quiet constituents are more about the perception of what engagement, right? Feeling like their voice won't be valued and not being comfortable with states where this is really the biggest barrier to overcome. If you don't overcome this, even if it's convenient, even if it's something they're interested in, they're not going to show up. And so for these things, it's more about creating environments that feel welcoming, that reach out to more diverse audiences, the adding engagements that reflect diversity of different political phenomena. So again, lots of, lots of different ideas, right? The thing that we want to stress is that, you know, across these different groups, there really are differentiated approaches and how you might engage them and recognizing that because there are multiple barriers, that actually one doesn't necessarily get into greater engagement, right? So maybe about how do we address the package of these barriers to make it easier for these folks to and for that, I'll transition to Steph, who's going to talk a little bit about what other cities have done and strategic opportunities to engage.
So yeah, your, your goal in moving this work forward, we wanted to give you some strategies, some, some, maybe some suggestions and considerations. So we bucketed strategic opportunities into four categories for you. And the first one is youth engagement programs. So our, our class did some digging around what other types of youth engagement or young adult engagement programs there are out there in the, in the world. And we found that right here in our home state of Oregon, there are some really amazing youth engagement programs. The city, excuse me, the Multnomah County Youth Commission, which really provides a youth voice for Multnomah County and the city of Portland. The city of Gresham also has a really robust youth engagement program as well in Oregon State. When we look at opportunities for high school alignment, we also learned that the state of Oregon just passed a Senate Bill, Senate Bill 513, which is going to require civic engagement for graduation. And so I think there's a real opportunity for the city of Sisters to work with the high school programs in ensuring that we've got the, the the younger demographic, the 15 to 19-year-old, 18-year-olds, to have them help you even form some different activities using that, that Senate Bill requirement. And there are also some already baked curriculum that you can pull from as well. Project Citizen and Oregon Civic Learning Project are easily downloadable curriculum that you can use to, to help engage some of the high school students and some of, some of our younger community members. Next, we talk about diversifying our communication strategies. As, as we talk to our, our young community members, we just learned that they're getting information from just different platforms. So I thought I'd do a real quick poll. How many of us get our information from either YouTube or Instagram or TikTok? Okay, I'll keep your heads up. Be proud about that. Awesome. How do you view our 20-ages of 15 and 40? All okay. Case in point right here. And we saw some of the older members of our community also using those platforms. And so I think this is a really good opportunity to see that when we diversify our information, whether it's calling people in to come into city engagement, civic engagement opportunities, or trying to get information from our young people. This is where, this is where folks are going. And I'd like to kind of give a nod to the cohort before us. And Cheryl knows one of the, for the project that they worked on was how do we create a social media platform? So there are already works that have happened in the cohort before us. And I know that the city council has already done some amazing work at making sure that information is in the nugget. And we've got a civic one-on-one, right? It's the the city one-on-one, which is, you know, the initiative really educating the rest of the community members. So we've got some things in place. And it's just a matter of continuing to move that work forward. Next, I want to talk about our young community members that were focused on more family-oriented types of activities, when we can find ways to engage the entire family or meeting the participants who are prioritizing that, especially in the evenings, we heard from one of our young community members say. So some really great practices that we were able to see. There's a family game night. We see on the, on the slide. This is a Las Vegas family game night where they actually is sponsored by a city council and it's all around fun and bringing the family together to, to really keep them engaged. Another interesting piece was doing different activities or providing different kinds of supports for childcare, for instance, or maybe inviting children to a city council meeting. And I know that can seem a little bit scary, but if we're talking about how we're engaging young people and, and getting younger, you know, younger families to, to come to these meetings, when we bring our, our children, our culture changes because we all know how we act better, right? And, and, you know, just are more respectful when we have children around. So it really is a way to change your culture and just really bringing in our families into, into the civic work that you're doing. The next thing that we would like to suggest is some participatory budgeting. So there have been a lot of different studies and opportunities throughout, you know, the civic engagement or city council platforms where they're actually having younger individuals participate in some budgeting. And this is just a facilitated process where citizens get to allocate how a portion of the budget might be spent. In New York, they did a project like this where they actually had 11 to 11-year-olds on up participate in planning the budget. And by doing that, it created this sense of ownership and inclusion. It's just, again, a really, really great way to get some younger folks involved and, and learning about how city budgets and, and how decisions are made. The next thing we wanted to share with you is just some implementation considerations. And I mean, I know it feels like a really, really daunting task, but we've had an amazing class that is just wanted to give you some ideas to consider as you are reaching this goal. We know feasibility, actually, one of the questions, these, these questions for you is how will the city prioritize engagement approaches that are tailored to different groups? We know that feasibility is always an issue, right? Do we have the money to, to, to implement some of these projects? And so that needs to be taken into consideration. And there might be some things that are like low-hanging fruit, like it might be, it might be more pass-prohibited, prohibitive to offer some childcare or a meal at a city council meeting, as opposed to jumping right into figuring out how to get a youth commission on board. So feasibility, I know, is going to be an important consideration, alignment with existing city council initiatives. Also leveraging ongoing programs and sisters. Again, I go, I go back to some of the high school civic engagement activities that are happening. And we've got other, other programs that are already underway at Sisters that you could probably just hop onto to, to continue this work. Intentional outreach to underrepresented groups. I think it's always important to recognize who's not in the room. And so it's going to be an important responsibility to be able to, to, to reach out to those, those members in this population who aren't in the room. So we can make sure that their, their voices are heard well. Next, implementation considerations is how will the city create opportunities to sustain engagement? We heard pretty loudly that, you know, when, when individuals know that their, their, their voice is heard and it can be reported back from city council in a way that is, is showing that there was some listening and engagement involved. Those report-back sessions is a really good way to keep folks engaged because they know that they, they felt listened to. And I think the next piece is establishing roles for our young community members. We talked about having youth commissions or youth advisory groups. Also, there's opportunities to bring on youth ambassadors. So working with the high school to, to bring on ambassadors that can help be your voice or to help be a voice for you as you're making decisions. The next implementation consideration is how will the city measure progress? So we know right now that there's really not a way that we're benchmarking or capturing the, the, the age group of the, the members that are coming in and participating in activities. So tracking participation by age group, event type, and, and other demographics that you might be interested in could be a way to really show that we're making some progress. And then also publicly sharing how youth, or excuse me, young community members' input is influenced by decisions and policies or initiatives. Individuals want to, want to be involved and they want to be able to, to give some influence around some of the work that you're doing. And then finally, recognizing and celebrating contribution. So if we can do that publicly, I think our younger community members will see that other community members are being recognized for the engagement that is, is taking place. So I think to conclude, in all of the work that we did for the last six weeks and talking with all of the young community members, they're ready to engage. They just need to know how. They want to be heard. And so I think there's, there's opportunity to really get folks involved. And so we just encourage that that this was helpful, we're, we're hopeful that this information was helpful. And we, we hope that we can build a future with our young community members, with them, not just for them. And now I would like to open it up for questions.
Good job.
Thank you for taking the time to do this. This is all time out of your personal lives to come in and see how you've been served and, you know, help the community. So that's really important to me and I appreciate you all being here tonight and all the time you spend within your cohort and, you know, in your small groups. One of the things that I, I love, I did read your presentation before you came in, kind of like taking a subject and turning it into, oh, this is just a grid, you know what I mean? It's like makes it so simple to look at by just like, these are the groups, these are some of the, you know, considerations and then matching them up. I mean, I know it takes a lot of time to do that. It's not just like, oh, this. And so it came off very professionally and I just appreciate working behind that on the show. Thank you.
Take a comment. It came through, it kind of struck me a little bit, the, the disconnect. It's our problem solved. And I just, you know, the reoccurring comment that some people made that because of reality, we weren't going to listen to them because of renters, we weren't going to listen to them. You know, in time that I've been on this council, I don't think we've ever asked anybody what their housing status was, unless we were dealing with housing situation. And I think, you know, how do you get that information out, I guess is the question, because I think that when you have folks to think we're not going to listen because I'm not a homeowner and therefore not a taxpayer per se. Like I said, I, I don't know. Look at, or look at this cohort out here. I don't know how many people live in town, how many people in this cohort own a home, how many people in this cohort rent a home? Or if any people in this cohort are temporarily displaced and living in an RV or something like that, that's something I don't know. And I don't want to know. Because I want to be able to think everybody's same, but that's our problem, not theirs. And so that's an interesting question to answer. Not sure how we do it. But that came through two or three different places in the report when I read it through. I kept popping back up. And it might've been variations on the feet, but it was, it was clearly there that there's a disconnect between how we're perceived and how their voices are perceived. So I don't have any answer, but I thought that was very enlightening.
Maybe just a quick response to that. I remember, you know, the session where we did come back and reporting back on stakeholder interviews, somebody mentioned, you know, feeling like, or somebody mentioned hearing that their, their interviewee thought that their voice didn't matter because they didn't own a home. And all of a sudden, three years. And all of a sudden, three or four other people in the group said, yeah, my person said that too. Like it maybe wasn't necessarily the first thing that came out, but many people have that somewhere on the list of reasons, it's not always the first one. But I don't really believe we all would have said that, one person had said, hey, my person said this, and it was very clear that was a stronger.
Well, and I think part of it is when people come and present, we ask them their address for the record. We don't ask them whether they're renting or what they're doing, but we ask them, maybe there's perception to it because we're asking for an address, we're asking for I don't know, but it was interesting that it came up and I was surprised to see if that's something I would not have expected to see, but I can understand that.
Did you ask in your interviews of people who were eighteen or over if they voted? They voted in local elections? Yeah, uh, yeah. Um, no, I know, I know for me and the, the individual I interviewed, that was not a factor. And maybe, you know, if anybody else in the cohort, raise your hand if that was a fact, yeah, I don't think that was a factor in our interview questions.
And which was curious that, you know, it's again, it's a, um, some levels representative government and I, you know, we, we really want more people to participate. However, you know, we all have lives and all that, and then we've done everything right and we guess we're going to elect people. But yeah, I was just wondering how many of them even participated at that level and felt like, oh, I checked the box, I voted for somebody good, that's fine, you know, or or they didn't even vote, really like, you know, kind of confused by, you know, local elections or.
I will say, um, it wasn't a question that we asked standardly, but there were a few people who said something along the line of, you know, the, this, there's nothing the city's doing that makes me not want to engage, I'm just, I'm not going, right, like I care, but I care not enough to actually, right? And it's just recognizing that coming to events is a relatively high bar, right? And for the person I spoke to, I know that they do vote, right? But sometimes it's easier to, you know, sit down and vote once a year than it is to follow local issues on a weekly basis. And so there are, you know, there are some young people out there who, you know, the level of engagement is never going to be this high, but it doesn't mean they're totally jacked out, it's just, uh, a different, a different type of behavior to kind of physically show up at a meeting and you don't have to versus something where we, we put a lot of, you know, you get stickers when you vote and a lot of paper, right? It's a, you know.
Can I, can I ask a question, kind of the group, if you get another handful? Um, when you first started this process, how intimidating did it seem to be working for city council? Was that intimidating? Raise your hand please. And what do you think now? Do you, do you think we're still, do you think we're intimidating now that you've kind of worked with us and populace and all that? And I think that that's, that public perception of, okay, we have a guy that's, uh, you know, six or eight inches taller than you where you're at. It doesn't mean we're any better or any different or, you know, in, in, you know, uh, renting or owning or promoting or, you know, we're the same people that you guys are. Um, we've just overcome in a lot of ways, the fear that you, that everybody has naturally of doing something different and being something new. Connor Bynum went, I'm gonna poke at you a little bit. He, he got on the Zoom meeting, you know, before he even lived here, but then he was worried about the help, the childcare situation. And I gave him so much credit because he jumped in before he moved here. Maybe, I don't know if you had decided to move here or not, but it was right around that time. And looking at him now, I mean, he's just like, he's part of it, he's, he's flesh and blood, he ends up doing the same stuff that he was talking about. How long's it been, four years now? Pretty, pretty okay. Seems like four, so you're aware of that. But, but honestly, but, but honestly, you know, he's part of that age group and he's, he's got the kids, he's got the caregiver. He's, he's all of these categories and, uh, he, not, I suppose, sometimes you, you hire a customer, but, but honestly, he's jumped in with both feet and he's an example. And if we can get the youth, uh, this, this group you're talking about to see him and also see us as people too, I think that that really helps. And I think there's ways, uh, and we've talked about before as a council, that we wanna get youth that are engaged and we're working down that path. The one thing I'll always say is government's slower than, than the idea, the formation of ideas. And it takes a lot longer to just get some of the stuff in place. We're talking about budget, well, we just did a budget and we're gonna vote on it in about half an hour. And so the next opportunity is already one year away. Doesn't mean we can't do that, it's just, it's always slower than people, most people understand, especially the people that aren't involved. They don't know how slow governments, we have to make decisions as a team, we have to plan it, or we have to fund it. And so that's kind of part of the thing, but we definitely wanna get, uh, youth involved. And I see, um, I see at least two or three of the things that we can do right on the top.
I, I think that, good point, I, I think that, you know, we, we do have citizen committees and I think we've lots of opportunity to kind of get some new citizens committees, special departments and urban forest board, planning commission maybe, but that's kind of dry and dull, I'm scared of people going to kick.
Bring in some kids, it might make it fun, yeah.
You know, I, I, I think it would probably help, to be honest with you, um, these meetings could. And I think that, I look at my own experience of moving into civic engagement. Being on a park and recreation district board is, is a very comfortable way to get exposed to how governments work. You know, one of the things I made a note of when you were talking like about the library thing was that one of the barriers that we have in the way, we're overcoming, we're working hard at it, Jordan's working very hard at is that we have diverse service providers here from a civic perspective, we have a park and recreation, we have the city, we have a library district that's run. I don't, God knows where some are over there, I don't know where they are. We need to show up once in a while and put books on the library and, uh, you know, and so it, it makes it hard to sometimes coordinate things. Cause the library's a perfect place for, for family game night, and I've done that in libraries and other places that I've lived. And so one of the barriers that I noticed when I first moved here was that mostly organizations were kind of working in their own circle and there was a little lack, nobody was ignoring it. But now there's concerted effort on the part of the student tenant, student manager and and participant, and the part is to all work together on cooperative projects. And so maybe it doesn't fit for a, a student in a certain committee here, but it might be, say, on the park and recreation district side or even on the fire district side or over, you know, and so I think that's something for us to kind of have some discussions about with our colleagues and other entities. As we look, especially if we get involved in the civic class at the high school. I think that's a tremendous opportunity, I'm an educator, that's why we think that way. And, uh, and so I appreciate the work and it did raise my, uh, thought on a couple of things, but those are some things that I saw. And I, like I said, um, I think the thing that disturbed me the most from what I talked about was that a sense of our voices isn't compared because we're not important enough, we're not whatever enough. And, uh, nothing further from the truth, we have dark side in this community because of the work of a group of high school students in the future. And since community, they're not, they're not, they're part of anything, they're all the perfect thing. That came from, we push from high school students, so it does happen. It's on four years, by then they're in that next quarter.
Oh boy.
Yeah.
So my first thought was class of twenty-four, we set the bar so high. Apparently not high enough. Great job, you guys, um. Let me just say, first of all, as far as presentation and report, um, I thought it was really organized well. You guys really took the time and it was an easy read through, I didn't get lost, have to go back or anything like that. What the heck is this? Who did this? Love it, love this, the one pager, oh, it's awesome.
It's a two pager.
Two pager, but thick paper, I think this is fantastic. Uh, great job. Um, and then of course, your, your slide deck here is wonderful, so let's talk about content. After I read a report, I always kind of, kind of rated on, did I learn anything after I read this? Um, and I certainly did, I certainly did. And, uh, some of the things that really stood out for me, um, I loved the, um, idea of the youth ambassador, um, even from a social media perspective, because you could see we're, we're probably, um, not getting into that younger group, as you guys had, had noted. Um, I went out onto Instagram today and I found a Sisters Oregon profile, don't know who runs it. Um, it's got twenty-six thousand followers and, you know, ninety-four posts all about sisters. And I thought, well, you know, if they can do it, we can do it, so why not? And if we could get some of the youth involved in pre- creating that content, I think it will certainly stir some interest. The things that they're interested in seeing, right, that's what they're interested in. So I love the youth ambassador idea. Um, I also liked the, um, what's it called, the, the, uh, budget, participatory budgeting. Okay, so, um, I know the cities worked really hard to get feedback on things, so just like our Northwest Park, we recently had an event to say, well, what are you interested in seeing within this park? But I don't think we've ever taken the approach of, here's a chunk of money, what do you wanna do with it? I thought that was really intriguing. And I did read, uh, some of the links that you provided in the report and went and saw what other cities are doing. Um, that one was a, a real plus for me, I thought that was really interesting. Um, and then, let's see what else.
It's really easy for us, um, to move money around. That's simple. If you move the money around to the right place and offer it, uh, to, for someone else to start the program or people to jump in and be participatory, that, that's easy. It's, it's the actual getting the participants involved and, and kind of, that's the hard part. Sometimes you gotta just leave money first, right? And that, and we can do it pretty easily and say, hey, we're gonna set, we're gonna have a youth budget program, here's five grand. Are you, there you go.
I would love to see, to see them come up with. Um, when you were going out and doing your surveys, were people kind of surprised you were asking them was? What was the response in general about, about that?
Executive committee, it's a surprise. I, I think they were wondering where it's just gonna go.
What does this mean?
Are you gonna share what I'm saying? Isn't going on social media saying that I said something bad because I don't want to tell you about it? I think before I interviewed, but like, there's a lot of things online that people felt really resistant to getting sort of beaten up with online with communicating about sister stuff. And I thought that was, uh, the number of people, well, everybody I spoke to had, had a similar traumatic experience of trying to engage with like a Sisters Community Facebook page and kind of feeling like they didn't have a place. And it was, so they were like, in my interviews, I heard these things, so they were resisting even when we said, I'm like, I'm gonna take some of what you're saying, might be in a report and they're like, don't put my name. And I was like, I don't think what you're saying is bad, but we're gonna keep your name out of it, yes. Those things are fair to say and they're representative of many other people. So I think there was some resistance and that's part of the reason I probably did this.
I would just add that, Gary, your comment about sort of concern. I didn't sense any anger or frustration, but looked around at the average age in this room and the people we spoke with aren't necessarily represented here. So it was a little bit surprised, a little bit grateful that somebody was asking, but mostly it was just, and we hadn't thought about this before, so. It's, nobody's frustrated, but it asks, there's that, that, that would be interesting to actually think about that.
Now, tell, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think part of the age group of this room in general is, we have to, we have to challenge our youth to a certain extent and get them out of their comfort zone and teach them, hey, look, I've set my neck out and have I been all that a big time? Yeah, absolutely, have I done things wrong on purpose, but, you know, we make decisions once in a while that don't work out how we think. Um, but that's all part of it, you don't grow if you don't get out there and kind of hit your buttons, pushed a little bit by other people and, and get just the challenge of, and, and, you know, be, uh, just taking a little bit of a risk. And you get more of the work from that than standing on the side looking at it, wondering why nobody's listening to you. So that's how I feel about it, even as part of what, we all have, you know, not city council, not, it's a community thing.
I think that you, you had an interesting point, and that is something that if you spend much time on a certain Sisters Facebook page, which I won't bring here, um, you're gonna find it's full of negative. I mean, it, it just seems that, loses, I read it because I wanna know what people are thinking and I hate myself every time I do it. I really do, but, um, and so I can see where a young person stepping in and saying something and then getting literally slammed by other people that may not even live in this community. Or be, certainly be a part of this community, maybe they could be. Uh, it doesn't take much for, I worked the team and it doesn't take much to send them somewhere else. And so the, the interesting thought is to have to be, if we want to create a safe environment or place to create the safe spaces, heavily moderated for civic engagement for youth, where, um, the pages can be stated and where angry retorts are basically subdued, told it's not appropriate. So that we can kind of build a safer space, because I'll tell you what, that Sister Facebook page that I think they're referring to is not a safe place. Even for me, I mean, I've been called so many names, I don't think Santa's not even so dumb possibly. It doesn't bother me, but I know it bothered seventy or eighteen or sixteen or fifty.
And I love, I love what I'm hearing and I think what we've heard, uh, the folks that we've interviewed is that the younger folks, if you, if you ask them where that safe space is, they will come. Right? If you build that with them, they will come. And to your point, Michael, you know, sometimes you, you just have to push yourself out there. But what we're hearing from our community members is they're not safe yet. Put, put them, create that safe space and then they will start to feel like they can make their comments, like the ones that Riley's talking about. They can say the things, they can participate in a budget conversation knowing that their voice is gonna be heard. Um, because you asked them, I think that's the key. Um, we can all sit, those of us who are over the age of forty, um, I think we can sit and make up some really great things and ideas, but if we don't ask them, uh, the folks that we're trying to create this for, probably gonna miss the mark.
I'm only thirty-nine.
You look great. So I, I think we need to, to wrap up here in a few minutes, we have one more, uh, thing before we can end the meeting. Um, I'll, I'll just say that I think the, the work we have is um, A, just defining what is success in this category, it's, and I don't think it's, we're gonna pack this room two times a month with, you know, the fifteen to forty demographic, I, you know, I think it's gonna look a lot different, but. But, uh, yeah, I think that's a question for us is, you know, what does success look like, it's gonna, you know, I think moving the needle in, in a lot of different, you know, in the direction, I think it's, it's a, it's a good step, because we are behind this. You know, fifteen to forty, you know, and the four different groups, you know, um, you know, they have different needs, so. Um, I think that's something for us to work on. Um, and otherwise I think also it's, you know, what I was taking away from this, we're getting out. And we, and we do get out of the community one way or another, we're on, we're on committees, we go visit other organizations, we do talks, um, try to catch a coffee, things like that, but I, I think really still just meeting people where they're at. I think there's a lot more we can do in that respect, that's, that's kind of my, my two cents, what I was getting out of this.
I do think, I like your comment about bringing a child, I think that every time we have a controversial topic on the agenda where we don't have a packed room of angry people, we're gonna require everybody to bring a child, when they commence rent out, they'll borrow one from your neighbor or. And then act the way you want that person to act, then it may be a little more civil, it might get more done.
All right, well, thank you so much, I know, um, Kellen has one thing that he wants to say before we wrap up this evening, but, um, um, I've only one, Kellen?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna hold it. Yeah, it's not mine, yeah.
Just wanted to say on behalf of the entire Sisters Civic Leadership, uh, Planning Team, which includes us, the City of Sisters and uh, National Polity Consensus Center, uh, just a huge congratulations and thank you for all the time and attention you've put into this, this is our second year running it. Still, you know, finding our sea legs, becoming a well-oiled machine, but y'all were, um, incredibly supportive and engaged and thoughtful. And yeah, the wheels have been turning for me throughout your presentation as well in terms of how we at C4C and the rest of the nonprofit ecosystem here can support the city in terms of encouraging civic engagement. I think there's a lot of, uh, really good content in this that I'm excited to share with other people in our community as well. And as a token of gratitude to all of you, we have some, uh, gifts that I'll hand out in just a moment, but just to, uh, prelude what is going into them, one thing that I've found and I think a lot of these folks have found is that if you're going to encourage civic engagement in this community, you're gonna have to spend a lot of time in coffee shops. And so, uh, in your gift bags are some things that'll help, uh, you know, take a, or contribute to your caffeine fund, I guess you could say, um, as well as a, a vessel to hold some of that caffeine and maybe a little bit of light reading, um, aligned with the civic engagement topic while you're spending time there. So just thank you again so much and I look forward to seeing you in coffee shops around town soon. Please continue to. while you're spending time there. So just thank you again so much and I look forward to seeing you in coffee shops around town soon. Please continue to consider us a resource going forward. And uh, yeah, thanks for being a part of this community. And thank you.
You're also too funny, doesn't it? So I have to walk around town.
You know, it's, it's funny. I do have ten three week old puppies in my house right now, so I'd love to happen to for every single one. I haven't thought about that, Gary. Thank you. That's a good point. It might be a good way to offer them.
And everybody, we appreciate it. So many smiles and I have, I heard a lot of exchanging of email addresses and phone numbers of, I think from a lot of your friends named after us. Um.
And please continue to use us as a resource. We're here.
And if he skips on the street, say something. I mean, my.
You're supposed to be a car.
My memory, you know, be names and then where I know somebody from. So just please say something.
Yep.
If I forget, it's not you, it's me.
That's, that's true for me as well. You think, you know.
That's all of the subject.
I have, I have a, I have a corner neighbor and I kept looking and thinking, I know that guy. Where are you going from? I walked by the house anyway.
Yeah.
Now you just prove.
Yes. Well, thank you very much. You, it's fantastic work and, and so helpful. And I know that we're gonna see all of you.
Um, on council.
On council, um, some, some, some of you are already, you know, on your way to like the positions, um, and uh, maybe so. Um, can't wait to see you. I'm gonna work with you guys. Thank you. Workshop and we'll start this city council meeting at six thirty and then we'll be there as well. I'd like to call the order, the June eleventh, twenty twenty five, city council regular meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I apply the patience to the flag of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation under government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You go, Paul.
Mayor Letts.
Here.
Council President McDougall.
Here.
Counselor Pep Frieden.
I'm eating a brownie, but I'm here.
Counselor Ross.
Present.
Counselor Pellerin.
Here.
We have an approval of the agenda.
I move to begin the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. We have any visitor communication today?
I see none.
Hey.
My protest.
Right. Don't have any presentations because we just had a fabulous one in our workshop. Um, so we'll just move right on to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consented from them.
A second. Right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All right, one can pass it. All right, straight on to council business. Uh, first up is a public hearing in consideration of resolution twenty twenty five dash zero seven, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. And the finance director, Joe O'Neal, will walk us through this.
Yes, thank you very much, council. Um, so this is one of uh, five budget resolutions that you'll adopt tonight for the city at least. Um, the first two you approved in a consent agenda. Uh, the second two are public hearings, uh, the first of which is uh, the consideration of, of state shared revenues. And the reason why we do this is number one, for state law. And number two, it does allow the public a second opportunity. The first is the budget meetings. The second is this meeting, uh, to comment on the treatment of any state revenues uh, that the city receives and how those are, are treated throughout the budget. So um, that's basic. Oh, yeah. That's okay.
Public hearing. Hold on to that. Go on.
Yeah. So that's, that's the main purpose for this one. So this is kind of uh, you know, one of those uh, resolutions we do year over year uh, for that very reason. So um, it's pretty simple and straightforward. Let me not have any questions about it.
This is where we uh, add the youth, uh, the youth money to one side.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know what? Let us talk about it.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, um, do you have any public comments? I'm listening to you. All right.
None.
Then, okay, there's enough on the comments. So the public hearing. Discussion. Do you have any further questions or comments?
Kind of thank the logic committee, I guess. And you know, again, that's another participatory thing that we do and um, you know, they did a great job and thanks again staff. Awesome stuff.
There's someone on, from CLA that says she wants to end the question. That we're, we're real and being all.
That's the same one. Great.
Again.
Yeah, whistle.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, if there's no other discussion, can I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash zero seven.
Second. All right, and a second. I need a final discussion. Okay, we'll move on to the vote. Is this roll call or just all those in favor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, aye, in no case. And the motion passes.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, next on to our second public hearing of the evening. Uh, in consideration of resolution twenty twenty five dash zero eight, a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Budget appropriating funds, approving a tax levy and directing staff to file the budget with the county clerk. So I'm gonna open that public hearing. And staff report is Joe O'Neal.
Yes, thank you. Um, so in this resolution, you're not only gonna be approving the, the the rate, the millage rate that the, the city will get um, from its citizens, but you also approve the budget. So as you can see here on the screen, um, here are all of the uh, for the general fund, you have all of the departments separated. And then as you go through the funds, you have each category separated. So you know, for the water fund, you have personnel, materials and such. And so um, basically that allows uh, staff to spend the budget authority set forth in these figures. And so um, anytime we have uh, you know, an, an overage, which is rare, those uh, the sort of budgets will have to be more than those numbers are. So that's what we set our standard for the budget. Um, and uh, you'll notice that um, we also have the operating contingency set forth in there. So if you have a budget transfer, it usually comes from an operating contingency. Um, and so it's not an addition of appropriations per se, but it's more or less a, a transfer of, of uh, allowances for certain expenditure line items. Um, and so, yeah, that spells it all out. It was kind of fun this year because uh, we had uh, one fund that had a line item that hasn't been there since I've been here and that is a parking district fund. So uh, this is a word document, as you can probably see. So when I go and key all those in, it was kind of fun to actually add something in there and, and then re, you know, refoot everything again. Um, the exciting stuff in the accounting world.
You don't do that much.
No. So as you can see, the total adopted budget there, thirty five million, two thirty eight, six sixty one. That is a budget that was approved in the budget meeting and then will be adopted hopefully by you all here at this hearing tonight.
All right, you go. Uh, do you have any public comments?
All right. If you're on Zoom and want to make a public comment, please raise your hand. None.
Okay. Good hearing. But council session.
Is this the time when if you really wanted to, we could maybe talk about reducing taxes and actually taking less property taxes from our base? And. Well, we could.
Say that.
I think you should think about that.
Not it?
Not this year.
Yeah. But.
Is this the point where we would do that?
No, we would probably do it at the budget.
Well, I just wanted to make sure I was tracking up.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, cause you, you, you did approve that, the same millage rate in the budget meetings as well. So it's a very similar resolution, if you remember.
You know, we are government, it's the, the definitely don't lower taxes very much, but I don't. I don't think it hurts to discuss why we do or don't. And I think that would be a great time to budget. Next year, um, maybe we don't need forty, thirty five, you know, maybe we only need thirty four. I don't. And that would just leave a little, a little bit more in people's thoughts. So, and just a thought. Exercise.
Okay.
Sorry.
Oh, my God.
Um, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash zero eight.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any final discussion?
No, I already, I already ruined it. So sorry.
What? All right.
Say it for a moment.
Um, all right, all those in favor, um, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passed. Resolution passed. All right, on to resolution twenty twenty five dash zero nine. Enter fund law. Joe O'Neal, this is a fun one.
Yeah, this is a fun one. So this is a little funky to, to wrap your head around. Um, but essentially this is the mechanism um, in order to get U R A funds from the debt service fund to the project fund. So remember the U R A has two funds and the, the sole purpose of the debt service fund is to collect taxes and pay debt. The second fund is a capital projects fund. Its sole purpose is to build, build things and pay for administrative fees. Um, unfortunately, you can't just transfer from the debt service fund to the project fund because that service fund can only pay debt. And so the easiest way to, to work around that, if you're just transferring within the agency, is to have another agency, the city loan money to the U R A, to the project fund, right? So the city gives money to the project fund, thereby incurring debt in which the debt service fund is able to pay that back. And it's a great little chart that's been trademarked by Gary here. So as you can see, uh, the general fund is loaning the project fund the money and then the debt service fund is thereby paying the general fund back. So this happened simultaneously. Uh, we do not have this um, in our budget for twenty five, twenty six. So this will probably be one of the last years we kind of do this, kind of simultaneous um, debt fund transfer until maybe towards the end of the U R A, I'm assuming. Um, and yeah, kind of a wonky way to do it. It'd be nice if there was kind of some kind of like exception that we could use in order to transfer this because it is kind of confusing. Uh, but that's the best mechanism we have right now.
Seven years, I understand.
Yeah.
It's the picture that does.
Yeah, it is. Let me see. We have a few questions for Joe. Okay. Thirteen motion. I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash nine.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Right, that's out, a discussion into consideration of republic services rate increase request. Yeah, so if you friends from republic services could kind of come up to the table here. I have a couple of people online as well, so working on your interview. Be able to participate in this discussion, presentation. And be noticed. See you. Really good.
Yeah, please speak right into those mics, get them kind of close to your mouse so the people on the computer and it comes through on the recording.
While you get that set up, just um, yeah, get the presentation set up. We've all, we have that in our package. Fine, we wait and still got it, that as well, but we want to do it there momentarily.
Do you want to get back into the meeting? You need to get back into the meeting. It's okay.
Maybe I'll do the introduction. We have Erica and Dan here from Republic Services. So annually they come to the the city council for uh, a rate increase based on their uh, financial performance from the two thousand twenty four year and the real gain to two thousand twenty five. So the cost of operating service, uh, city sisters, uh, customers, residential and commercial. Um, and so they, you know, calculate what their, you know, profit, loss and margins and all that and submit their financial information to staff. Uh, we review, we had a meeting several months ago. Um, and then at least usually the process is then scheduled by council uh, to present the, the rate request and kind of the numbers behind it, but what's driving the what is usually the increase and garbage recycling and all in rates. Um, and for financial, so to the council to consider those requests, I think you're obligated annually to, to review those requests as they come in, the drivers, things like that. That's right. Fuel costs, labor costs, uh, tending fees, you know, accounting charges, uh, the holders for, you know, taking things to the landfill, um, you know, and kind of recyclables and some of that stuff too. So, um, if uh, if the council grants a rating, uh, increase and it comes back to that by resolution, the charging, uh, which will give a second beginning in June and it would be effective July one.
Hold on, word of clarification?
Yeah.
We're not discussing the recycling side tonight that we saw here, but that's not what we're doing tonight. We're proving just that the can.
That's right. Yeah, just the, the basically.
Cause I have several questions about that process.
Yeah.
I won't bog us down with those, hold them till it's appropriate and I will have them.
Thank you. Um, and one thing to mention, as we're talking about billing and rates, uh, I didn't see one of my first calls about this, but um, since you're here tonight, uh, customers should be aware that we're on a monthly billing now in city sisters too. So some folks may notice that the bill looks only twice as large as usual, but that is because it's now coming for two months.
And that was not communicated very well. My wife was living. Why is my rate down? Luckily, I'm on city council and I knew why. But guys, just had to do a better job. Let's keep letting them do that. Cause I think we'll have more of those faults.
All right, you're live.
Great. Well, thank you for having us tonight. Uh, as Mr. Wheeler said, my name is Erica Heitzma. I'm the general manager for Central Oregon Business Unit. I'm with the X R D, who is our finance manager and we're here to review our twenty twenty four financial performance along with discussing our twenty five projections along with our rate ups. So to look at this, this particular slide, uh, the center in twenty five projections, but I'm gonna take a moment to go over and review with your for financial performance. Um, so looking at our top line revenue, so revenue for twenty twenty four, uh, was one point three million dollars. It increased by sixty thousand dollars and five point three percent compared to twenty twenty three. The reasons or the drivers for this revenue increase included um, a twelve and a half increase rate increase that went into effect in twenty twenty three. Half of that carried over into twenty twenty four. In addition, in twenty twenty four, there was a rate increase that was approved from one point five percent and half of that also impacted twenty twenty four. And that's the reason why you're seeing that increase in twenty twenty four. Any questions with that before looking at our expenses?
Yeah, I do call them together.
Okay.
I'm kind of fit tonight, so. Let's go back and, and talk on that particular chart. Um, you know, you're talking about we carrying over twelve percent increase half one year, half next. Where is that reflected in the actions?
The actual right here of twenty twenty four, that's the revenue that we.
Right, like unexpensive, excuse me. Where, where do I see the impact of that? Carrying over percent rate increase. Is that it? Is that the thirty nine nine number?
So the uh, one million grew for forty two thousand dollars. That's the revenue that we.
No, I'm, I'm, okay, I guess I'm confused. Were we talking just revenue right now? I thought we were in the other part.
Just I think that, that explanation was just relating to the revenue increase that we saw from a year-over-year perspective.
I was reading ahead, sorry.
No worries. Okay, um, and then to look at our total expenses for twenty twenty four, total expenses were one point, uh, almost one point two million dollars. It increased by close to a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars or nine percent. Miss discussed the top five uh, expenses that we have, which make up roughly eighty percent of our total expenses. It does include labor disposal, franchise fees, management fees and depreciation. So looking at our labor, labor was. franchise fees, management fees and depreciation, so looking at our labor, labor was um three hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars. That's thirty three percent of our total expenses that we incurred. Labor from a year-over-year perspective increased by twenty one thousand or five point six percent compared to twenty twenty three. There's a few reasons that drove this year of year increase, and if, and those reasons um include, we did a cost of living increase in October of twenty twenty three and that carried over into twenty twenty four. We also do an annual merit adjustment for employees, and then that happens in March of twenty twenty four. And then there's also just costs associated with uh staffing, so staffing and turnover, employee retention, um that impacted. So any questions relating to that before we look at disposal?
Those here, um hiring, retention, I know everybody had a hard time, you know, with COVID and coming out of it, and um the security is about to stabilize, is that something?
It is starting to stabilize, um I would say, look at twenty twenty two, twenty three and part of twenty four, they were still rough, um I'll say rough years, um but this year, twenty twenty five, um is definitely improved compared to what we saw in previous years, we're just seeing a stabilization with our staffing. More employee retention, less employee turnover, so that stabilizes a lot of different things, stabilizes the same employee turnover and stabilizes and you seek the service that we have to communicate with, so it's one of our top focuses that we have is to ensure that we make the proper staffing of this, because it impacts so much. All right, looking at our disposal, that's our second uh largest cost category, disposal was three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars uh last year, it was twenty six percent of our total expenses. It increased uh from a year-over-year perspective about forty four thousand dollars or sixteen percent um compared to twenty twenty three. One of the main reasons for this is both is due to um the rate increase that compared to at Dishes County landfill. From a volume perspective, we actually saw a decrease year-over-year of about four hundred and thirty tons, which is a whole lot, but when you see um a category increase of about sixteen percent, it's, it's mostly related to that price increase that I saw from Dishes County. Any questions relating to disposal?
Yeah, I'm asked the projected increase next year is thirty three thousand nine hundred and seventy four. If you're seeing lower tip rate, uh is Dishes County raising the rate again, sure?
Yes.
Is that a, an every year thing while they get ready for the new landfill, they're bumping it up each year?
This year, um effective July first, they will be increasing their rates to ten dollars, and they do have.
From?
To, sorry, to uh increase it by ten dollars, not to.
I guess it depends, oh, so we're going to talk these numbers a little bit more here.
Thank you for catching me, that's why I can't hear, um. No, yes, they are, they do have planned increases um in the years.
Annually, basically.
I think within the next few years, there will be annual increases, um but they have more information that, that means that um being official approved by the Board of Account Commissioners at the time, regarding, regarding the future increases, but effective July first, there will be a ten, ten dollar increase to their.
Can you please tell us for that percentages compared to that?
Hold on, so. What was it? Twelve and a half percent, I couldn't hear.
When you said there was four hundred tons decrease in, in overall pickup?
In overall tonnage that they did pick up, yes.
Okay, what contributes toward that decrease?
It can be a variety of things, it could be um, you know, less waste that the customers are setting out. Cur, it could be less projects um from a uh industrial perspective that are happening in the City of Sisters, it could be less commercial reasons occurring as well, there can be a couple different factors that impact that.
This, this doesn't reflect costs related to construction, does it, they pay for their own large dumpster, they pay for that fee to you directly, is that not correct? We need to ask the construction site and see if they're putting things into one of your large.
Large containers.
Yeah. That's, that's a, a separate fee to that particular of the front rates and stuff that we can see here from our usual typical customers that have a tip count back to their business or something.
It is still part of the franchise contract, so that is uh part of the revenue that we've earned, that's part of the expenses as well, so that's all within the franchise system.
And that's part of that tonnage you topped.
Yes.
Explain this one again, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a metric that um you know, you listen, do you remember anybody like that, you know, economic reports, you know, one of the metrics they use is how much garbage is going without um to say if we're economically healthier, huh, which is a.
That and COVID is a solution.
It's a very, it's a very metric, it's that, but you know, it does say something.
It's important, yeah. Okay, uh looking at third largest category is franchise fees.
We have one last question.
Sure.
Um, I'm a numbers person. I see eight percent of your expenses, I don't see the other twenties, is there a reason why we're not seeing those?
There's, I mean, we can definitely go.
I'm just curious, is, is it, there's so many categories of little amounts or?
Yeah, they're just smaller amounts, um it would probably take us quite a bit of time to go through each of them, so I felt um that is appropriate just to focus on these categories since it makes up the majority of our expenses.
Well, it's a eighty percent.
And we can certainly go into any other uh.
I'm just, I'm just curious a minute, when I'm looking at public money and we're looking at cost to our customers, consumers, it's important to me to, to see that the dollars are appropriate, not by saying they aren't, but it's, you know, I, so I, sometimes I feel like I have not enough information and that makes me uncomfortable. So, um, I realize in this presentation, but perhaps if there had been something somewhere else, I know there's some other large sheets and things like that, but um what kind of categories fall into that extra, extra? Just roughly.
Uh, the other categories include um our insurance costs.
The, the more, majority of the, of the other points would be maintenance for vehicles and containers, um insurance um costs and other overhead costs, uh potentially billing and collections of uh or the other N S K A type expenses to administer.
And you use a third-party building company, you do, so.
Yeah.
And so is the reason we went to every other month was?
It's an industry standard, um and it's actually, it's.
That's not a good answer for me. I mean, we're, we have consumer base that we provide a service to, and um industry standard is, is, is a nice word. But I want to talk about community standard, and the community standard is people expect to see that bill once a month.
Yeah, the, the reason um generally that it, it is an industry standard is because of savings and billing, instead of sending twelve bills, six bills, that's a cost saving.
But I don't see that savings reflected in the budget, see, so I don't have all the information there, so if it's a budget saving, where does that show up, the saving of some money in the increased costs? See, it, it uh it when I get asked, by my spouse, but likewise as well, I want to be able to give an, an intelligent answer other than, well, I don't believe change. And I'm not sure that we had any discussion of that change. And that makes me extremely uncomfortable, we're franchisee in our, in our community. But we expect to be a partner, not a recipient. And I feel like a recipient, partner, you've got to catch more of this from me before we're done, I apologize, but these can be avoided if, if everything is there and transparent. And um, I, I'm not happy about the change in fee, mainly because I'm not the fee, but the schedule, because we can have a chance to talk about it and let our community members know. And we never had a discussion, well, how much does that seem, is that going to impact our rate increase, why how many does it impact the rate increase, unless it can be if we don't do it. As opposed to a large national corporation in a season, but like this for common three thousand people. Makes me very uncomfortable.
I'll second the notion, um I can talk about it longer than you, I can, and I, I won't, but I feel the same way. I want, I want part of the strong part, but um I'm just part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh the next, or the third category, that's our uh third largest expense category is franchise fees. Franchise fees for twenty twenty four was ninety two thousand seven hundred and eighty four. Uh, that's seven point seven percent of our total expenses, this increased by uh three thousand three hundred and seventy one dollars or four point two percent. And this is tied to the revenue growth uh from a year-over-year perspective.
That's the one number I do at the same rechar.
And our fourth largest category is management fees, uh this category is nine, ninety one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars, it is seven point six percent of our total expenses. It increased by two thousand seven hundred and forty seven dollars or three point one percent. Cost, cost of these, uh cost in this category includes um cost associated with our centralized call center, um cost associated with our IT systems, accounting systems, um our area corporate management team that supports the local division, system expenses and legal support. And then our fifth largest category is our depreciation of our equipment, that is sixty two thousand eight hundred and eighty five dollars, and is five point two percent of our total expenses. This increased by seven hundred, I'm sorry, seven thousand six hundred and eighty one or two uh twenty twenty three.
Isn't your depreciation of spare equipment a ten year, five year, a year? It's pretty, it's pretty heavy duty.
Right, it is, I would say on average ten years, um and it does depend on what type of equipment, but on average, our trucks are about ten years uh depreciation chart. Say that again?
I said it was better than I thought. They didn't beat me.
Okay, Erica, yes.
Um, regarding the key expense categories that you just went through, is Republic working on any kind of efficiencies or improvements to try to bring down expenses, and can you talk a little bit about some of those efforts?
Sure. I think um our number one, uh there's several focuses that we have. Um, what I talked about before relating to employer retention, um I think that's where it really starts, staffing is foundational, it impacts everything that we do from service to our community. Safety, um that we have every single day to our community, so that's first and foremost to make sure that we have the right staffing levels, so that's always a priority of ours to make sure um that we're appropriately staffed and um and also to uh look at making sure that we're overstaffed at times, because we do see turnover, it's, it's natural in our business. So we want to be able to get to a point where uh we can appropriately flex our force, so it doesn't impact uh service to the communities, so that's, that's number one. From a safety perspective, that's our top priority at Republic Services. Um, so we have a lot of core focuses relating to the safety, to ensure that the service that we provide to this community is what we expect, but we also do that. See, we don't want our employees to get injured, we don't want our community members to get um hurt because of results of service that we provide or receive any damage, so that's our, like I said, top priority from, from uh for value perspective, so there's a lot of focus relating to how do we improve our safety uh results and metrics. Again, that overall provides better service and it does reduce costs of staffing and um and safety, the third is service performance, we have a lot of metrics, a lot of reports that we look at to ensure that we're providing um service to the community, that the community expects, and there's always um goals, um and targets that we look to achieve in order to improve our service. Again, that goes back to staffing, staffing directly impacts the service that we provide to the community. We also look at or see trends relating to miss services that we do, we will receive from the community members. We highlight those areas to do better trainings with our drivers, so that there's focus uh relating to those miss services. We provided uh resources of the drivers to be alive so that they can run the routes more efficiently, we have in cap technologies that help support um the service that they provide, it also supports, you know, so I do have technology that uh supports them from a safety perspective. So those are core focuses. Um, and then we have productivity measures to make sure that all of that that we're doing is the most efficient possible. Um, so there's a lot of metrics associated with um efficiency or productivity, so measure that. We identify where there's opportunities that exist from a productivity perspective, whether it's running our routes in the sequence that they should be running the routes, or it's um making sure that we are building effective routes for our drivers. Whenever we see gaps, we address those gaps uh with our frontline teams to, again, make sure that we were doing the most uh safe and effective service that we're providing.
Thank you. Questions?
Right, from a overall contract performance uh perspective, in twenty twenty four, uh the net income for um for the year was one hundred and forty three thousand dollars, that's one hundred and sixty four, there's ten point seven two percent uh total operating margin for the year. Welcome to. Slides are changing, oh, I apologize.
They do sometimes.
That was my fault. Uh, so this is, I'm sorry, I read this number here, so our net income again, uh for twenty twenty four was one hundred and forty three thousand nine hundred and sixty four dollars or ten point seven two percent operating function. So looking at uh twenty twenty five forecast, uh so in twenty twenty five, we anticipate our overall operating expenses to increase by approximately one hundred and fifty thousand dollars or just seven point three percent. Most of the expenses um that we forecasted were at CPI water, sewer, trash, which is five point two or three percent. Some of the cost categories are increased and are higher rate of five point two three percent. Those include uh the disposable expense, disposable cost category, that's expected to increase by about thirty four thousand dollars or ten, ten point eight percent. And again, this is due primarily to um ten, ten dollar a ton rate rate increase at Dishes County landfill. We also um anticipated a two percent volume increase in that, so to ensure that we do that cost category increasing by, again, about four, thirty four thousand dollars. Our labor is expected to increase um by about thirty four thousand dollars or eight point six percent, again, this is primarily due to annual merit increases that we give to our employees, in addition to a volume of uh increase that we're anticipating from twenty twenty five. Uh franchise fees were expecting to increase um by fifty seven hundred dollars or six point two percent, and again, this is tied to the revenue increase that we're projecting. Fuel, repair, maintenance, this is the vehicle expense as any tool to run our trucks and our equipment, we're increasing this by approximately seven percent, and again, this is a CPI increase cost falling. Slime. This goes into the six.
The number should cover not on this one.
Yeah, it was the last slide, actually.
Right.
The, the first slide, there it is.
Yeah, that was a dual speaking up here.
So overall, our twenty twenty five rate ask is six percent, and we do want to recognize that staff has made a recommendation of four point eight percent increase. And this includes the R M A considerations that R M A is going to affect life first, and there's various um reimbursements that we're expecting with R M A, and that's why there is an adjustment. From our perspective, we looked at it from a CPI increase of about three percent. And then the disposal increase roughly equates to uh three percent, so that's where we came, uh that's where this six percent is coming from from our house, but again, want to acknowledge that staff has made the recommendation of four point eight percent due to R M A impact that we anticipate. And that concludes the explanation, so any other questions?
And I go back to the American Crease theme mentioned, you said all of our employees, um does that mean everybody automatically gets American Crease service, that being eight percent is just the people in the case?
No, all of our employees do get annual merit increases.
Are you going to go through all these slides, I have questions about something.
The other.
Oh, excellent.
The other ones are relating to the sister recycling center um in the glass.
Mm-hmm.
The city. Right, and I don't believe um we're talking about that tonight, so.
And let me just give you some strong advice. I went through the numbers. First chart, big chart. It's full of errors, additional. Um some are small, two hundred dollars. One is seventy thousand versus eighty two thousand. I added them all up five times just in case my little fingers got fat. So either things are not in here, kind of like in the previous slide, because they were too insignificant to put in, they think they're a lot more. Or the numbers are. It makes me very uncomfortable again. Which, which slide are you regretting? Uh get the recycling center. When you get there, just go through that charts again to make sure those numbers are accurate. The recycling center performance slide. Um twenty twenty four actual numbers are um inflated over what, if you add up what you got in there, they're inflated. Well, I did math and I had, I had, I had a person check my math while I was doing it. So um yeah. I may, it may be something that didn't get put in. But the, the bottom total expenses eighty two thousand eight hundred and eighty one dollars is, when you add it all up, everything and minus the forty thousand and in revenue is seventeen thousand seven hundred and sixty one. That's the significant difference in my mind. And I'm not sure where the, where that fell through. Perhaps the, the twenty twenty five numbers are accurate. But that makes me question, you know, I feel like it's not, not good to even put front of something. Makes me nervous. It makes me, just, just before we get to that discussion uh or down the road. Go back to.
I'm misunderstanding. I'm looking at it right now. Does right, so maybe, maybe it's the presentation that's created.
I like to work on is what I'm doing.
I did have some questions on um in regards to revenue. What um this kind of segues into a recycling conversation, what kind of revenues are conceived from material recycling? And, and I know that will sort of changing a lot. Um but I, I didn't see that specifically. I saw some mention of, you know, obviously cardboard and something for performed a little bit better um last year than I thought there would, they would be. So I'm just curious, kind of my category. Um what are those numbers are like right now of, you know, you having to pay to have them transported and um it um, you know, filter facility or are you actually making some like an awful sum of materials?
The commingles um um the communal line is the, I'm sorry, communal recycling, yes, we still have to pay to process and transport it to Portland in order to get processed. So that is our cost. Cardboard, um there is a value in cardboard where it isn't a cost to the system. There's actually revenue generated from it.
So all the coal dealers up goes for the for sorting, separation in this cost, both fuel mileage and also fee for the sorting each single issue on that.
No, there's fee, there's, there's a processing fee. And the cardboard goes to Portland as well, but again, the value here was the cost. So there it's uh.
Is that net, net revenue gain or revenue loss? I mean, you add it all together.
It is, it is going to be net revenue loss because the communal line business is a much larger um or not communal string, excuse me, it's a much larger string than the hardware string.
What about glass?
Glass, um there is, does cause to process. So that is a cost to the system.
Do you see anything uh changing in any of us?
The communal stream, yes. That's uh the Recycling Modernization Act that goes into effect July first. This year will see a rise at the communal stream. So we will see cost reductions or actually that cost be eliminated uh as a result of that program. Um there will be transportation for universal express to take that material to the processors in Portland. So we won't, we won't see those costs um in our system anymore. Essentially, those will all go away um as part of the RMA program. But that only applies to uh the communal string. There is um some reimbursements also for the glass stream as well. But it won't be, uh it won't completely uh by way of the costs for the classroom.
Okay. And then um Jordan, are those some of the costs that that figured out part of that and delta between six percent or?
Yeah, yeah. About sixteen thousand. Somebody sixteen thousand.
Yeah, it must um Russia reduction from six percent, four point five percent. It was more.
So the end consumer versus putting recycle card. There are going to be a lot of different items in the same items, more items, less items in there. What, what does this act mean to the customer? Who puts it in the boot camp?
There will be different um materials that are now accepted as far as um U S C L list, giving a version of that um in order to come to the card. There will be some material that is taken out, but it's um a very small material.
It's how that be communicated to our citizens?
There is going to be communication as part of the RMA program that it's going to be just for which you're the community. Once RMA goes live. There is, there's a lot of communication will be.
Piece of paper we can hang on our fridge or we're going to have to think about it and find it on the website.
We're going to be posting it. Uh we're going to be mailing it. We're going to be doing enough blocks. We're going to be um it will be on our website and will be on uh Shute County's website and will be on the U's website as well.
The reason I asked, something that was missing this year that I've heard from many people about again, was every year in the past could, before you bought the company and after you bought the company, we received in our January bill, a uh very nice, it went on the refrigerator to the show. What was the, the lawn degree week? What was the recycle week? Didn't get that this year. And you had to go to website and go dig in and dig and dig and to find it. And while that may not seem to be a big deal in the larger community where people tend to be in their home most of the time because they're working. We have a community like this, we have a large number of retirees, some people who travel or have vacation homes. I can tell you now, I was in, I was two weeks in, in South Carolina and came back and I did my wish card I was supposed to put out and had to go to the website, found it and took me fifteen minutes. I'm fairly confident with that. So um I'd like to see that sheet of paper come back next year. It can't be a terrible expense. It's a pain, but it can't be terrible. And especially if we prove glass recycling at some point, that's going to have to be on the, the amount, what we put that, you know?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, you know, in your call types, you know, thirty four percent is no kind of regular information in calendars and stuff. So I see that one. I, I think if we got the calendars back, I think you would see that, that number goes.
And I, I will give you what, I will, I will say this year when my cans have been missed, I've had very quick service to pick it back up, which has not been the case in the past. So that's that we, that's not all, I'm not all beating you up, I just kind of stopping. I want you to know that, that uh from the service perspective side, uh what I've called, I it's worked. Somebody's answered the phone and then someone's been more, it's my big next stage, usually they're there that same game.
Good.
Any other um questions or comments or was, was there anything else from this uh great topic that makes me want to? Yes.
Yeah, I have, I'm like Gary, I have other topics you don't want to talk about, but it's not for today.
Yeah. And one last thing, the, the lawn degree yard degree card. They, you know, is there a fee to the user that's not built into the fees or that services provided is part of the franchise?
It is part of franchise service.
So it's not an additional charge?
It is a subscription fee, so.
That's why it's on.
The communal roll part.
Yeah. And the subscription fee is, can you remember how much that is? I'm not sure. No, no, okay, don't worry about it. But if a person needed two cans, is that double the subscription?
No, uh there is, there would be an additional fee for an additional can, um but I would have to look on it, which she.
And again, the reason I'm asking that is we just spent almost a month and a half working on defensible space code. And a significant part of that is clearing up landscape, getting debris out, getting vertical materials off the ground. We try to keep this town converted down. I, I can tell you that in my own efforts, I can fill that cart in about thirty minutes. And I need to think of a lot of room. What is other thing that we did? And even though we have the twice a year pickup and I leave a pile on the side of the Wolfhound bus, I got hurdle, I do, I think the truth. Um I will mind it. I, I think that, you know, you may need to think about whether or not for some people, at least they have larger lots of second cars is an appropriate thing to have in order to maintain the safety aspect. So we're not building that vertical material up on the ground until we're collecting kind of form.
I have two carts and two buckets. Yeah, my understanding is that the city of Sisters is contract with perhaps two cars, you know, and the second one is not charged.
I'll just.
Yeah, that's.
I, I apologize, I would have handled it.
Yeah.
No.
Someone told me that too, but I hadn't, I hadn't seen anything to know on the website. My second card will be very helpful.
Yeah, I didn't know either. I called Republic. I got the wrong information. I got the second cart, but they told me it was going to cost me more money. I never saw it on my bill, so I called again, because I, I didn't know what was going on. And I got a different person and they said, oh no, you're in, you're in Sisters. Um that's part of the
Okay.
A contract. You get a second yard waste can for.
Charge, call them tomorrow.
Yeah. And I come over and create that my best. Well, I, I think that's a great point though in that um just as, as a partnership, you know, when we're talking about, um you know, law enforcement, safety is really important to us in front of this council and our community. Um you know, so moving forward, you know, we're starting to, you know, pass some codes in that regard. And you, you know, as a city and working with our partners, you know, we're going to need to be a lot of outreach and help and, and you know, nobody likes an unfunded mandate or anything like that. So you know, starting that out there, that, that could be something that, you know, we could you know, be partnering on um moving forward. Um you know, we need some I think some help and some creative ideas on how we manage, you know, there's going to be a lot of, you know, natural debris. Um you know, that's going to be, needs initially be removed, but then, you know, things grow back. So um that continues process. I just saw today a post from Shute County about the fire free events that they have was last month and that they had doubled um the amounts of the degree brought and doubled. That's massive, which is fantastic. You know, you know, people are really concerned and motivated and, you know, really want to keep that, the train rolling. So unless that train starts fires, if it doesn't forge this.
And you're specifically talking about how we're going to be discussing ways of uh defensible space around system home, right? Is that what kind of what in the future is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I understand too.
Yeah, and it, you know, yeah, it's futureing because we certainly don't, you know, nobody wants to be like, oh, there you have to do this stuff, but we're not going to give you any resources uh to, to get it done, you know, and obviously there's community members, you know, older or unable to do that themselves, you know, so.
We have passed defensible space standards for new construction and we're going to be talking about existing uh over the next year or longer, yeah, or longer. So if this gets up for our, you know, uh we're going to probably have to figure out some creative ways to, you know, everybody builds their piece of it to keep communities safe.
So um and I had, you know, we've been talking about this in fire district and other entities, but um yeah, we haven't come to Republic yet in this discussion, and I think you're best to be a great. I mean, you might have some great solutions we don't even know about or thinking about. So um the stone are out there, so. Um.
And I know that the annual pickup you guys is, is chore. I watch folks from down and work through, you know, seed piles to live. Um but as I say, it's right now, you're our sole source of, of many residents that within the city of getting rid of that burnable fusible material. And some of our neighbors out in surrounding areas have trailers or horse trailers or something they can get. Some of this material in the hollows could not be landfill, but we really don't have that. We're looking for a lot of our citizens to stop them in the truck. And that's not a good idea.
Did the date change this year on that?
Yes, it did.
Okay, I had two neighbors that didn't, when we're not aware of that, we still have their files out. Um I think the date became earlier than it normally is. So just feedback from you guys that somehow that didn't get communicated um out to everyone. So if, I don't know, my difficult that is for you, but that was on the calendar every year.
Yeah.
Um no, that would be fantastic. That would be really nice. I think we get a lot of those calls, I'm assuming.
Yeah, put it out, newsletter based on.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Okay. Um so what do you need from us? Kind of a, a number? Or head nod or?
Yeah, and then like I said, we come back in June twenty fifth with master fee to charge schedule of that. Basically, the residential docs, the increase rate, set up.
Well, you're recommending forty staff.
Yeah.
Their estimate is six.
I, I think, well, it would be okay. But yes.
Okay, I, I just, I'm just trying to figure out the logistics here, you know, with that.
Yeah, I think we want to.
Half divided by four, you know?
We want to recognize that the RMA is going to effect July. Yeah, that little savings is going to be realized over the next year, but the estimate was about sixteen thousand in, you know, rebates and any other um remedies as transportation reinforcement for the cycle laws and we're going to start right there. I see that.
I was comfortable with that. It was actually somewhat, it's kind of, much more comfortable with that.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll come back on the twenty fifth with, with the, the rate standard of the four point eight. So you have the, the rate chart. How that applies to your customer, possibly and stuff.
Yeah, that's unfair because it's um because it's a new program. It's a senior, it's a, we're we're being effectively installing actually um the R and R and so. Um that sounds good to me.
I have one dumb question. This is nothing to go over time. Knocked my neighborhood today. Two months. Every single recycle cart was put down a little plopped over there. You've got a new machine that's a little bit, throwing that a little too heavy.
That's.
Because there's never been a problem with.
It is because of how the law.
Yeah.
Truck, sometimes we just have to adjust uh that because sometimes it'll swing too hard.
Well, I probably saw sixty cans with a little bit of something.
Yeah.
If, I didn't see one way to close, which was interesting because, you know, occasionally you'll see one or two. And I don't worry about it in summer, but in the winter when we start to get our rain and snow. And then we get the freeze thaw, freeze thaw, freeze thaw cycles, most cans sit out in the sun, at least my house I do and we get it. Then we have recycle that stays with us for sometimes two to three months. So just, just something to be aware of. It's, I'm not a complaint. I'm just like, what, what's going on?
And that's why it's, it just, it's an easy adjustment. We need to adjust that arms and the plug, all the, it's just because sometimes.
This, this clause, this clause, this clause feeling very, very, very.
They do. They pick up, you know, sometimes anywhere between fourteen hundred and sixty.
Yeah.
Stops her route.
Yeah. But like, we're on the beginning of route, so. I would just amaze every single one. I just then I started with.
I do want to give you a little bit of good feedback too, though. Um as a customer, I really appreciate the texts, the calls.
Yes.
All of the chats when something has changed. Um it's really, that's really helpful.
And that's been new this last year, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think um the customer service side is definitely.
Yeah.
I will add that this one.
Yeah, it's significant. Other than.
There's definitely, you know, we recognize, I mean, this is the first city that gave us feedback with large, with hard ever ever have billing. We could have a great communication. Uh we were actually just at trying the last site that gave us the same feedback. While we did do uh a letter out to those uh who requested it as far as on their account, we did now communication, we did it on uh their bill and serve. So you can, and not everyone needs the bill and cert. So we recognize that some of that communication is probably best to have an opportunity to.
Well, even, even your, your blast that you do, by even appropriate text blast, we could have somebody who does all of their stuff on bill pay. So it's set up to automatically pay the bill. So we don't need to know until we get a delinquent notice or something. If you just have to open up and see it, otherwise we would have just gone straight through.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Thanks for putting up with us.
Good.
Good to do it again.
All right, thank you. It's good to see.
We can't eat all that, so.
Right.
I mean, we could, yeah, we could. We're not going to do them.
Okay, we're going to respond to faring public comments. Um first off in our other business category, and that's Jordan.
Yeah, we, we had some public comment, but nothing, uh no questions or comments like that.
Okay, all right.
Love it.
Next up, the Shute County Sheriff's Office update, Lieutenant Davis. Evening. Go ahead and turn that.
Obviously a tough week this week for.
Obviously, a tough week this week for our community. Um, wanna reach out to OSP. We're helping this out investigation on a fatal crash. Um, and a team that handled that. Good partnership with the school district on that. And just thinking of that family as we move forward. Uh, busy week ahead with rodeo. Um, obviously tonight we're kicking that off and we'll be going through through Sunday. A little different in that they'll be having, I think, live music and dance all the way through Saturday night. So we'll have extra people on for that. Uh, OSP's um. High intensity traffic team will be out here. I think they have eight to ten troopers that'll be working throughout the weekend out on the highways, which is appreciated. Um, just update on some training. Deputy Burson's gonna be attending a firearms instructor course next week. Uh, helping our our training staff out on that. And uh, that's about it.
Well, thank you, Deputy, for being over at the SPRD. Cause um, you're on a hot, hot day. Dressed like he is right now.
Yeah, yeah, it was pretty hot.
And we probably lost thirty pounds.
Yeah, it was a good event. Um, we've done that for the last three years and we enjoy getting out there with the community and. Having the kids and families uh, reach out to us and that facility is is pretty amazing what they've done up there. So. We're doing a partnership there. Any other questions?
We did have a question that um. We brought an email about, so I just wanted to ask it in a public forum. Somebody was just concerned about ICE and. Um, you know, ICE in Central Oregon or with law enforcement, anything like that. So you know, sort of kind of a sheriff's office. Stance on that or or you know, message about that.
Yeah, by state law as well as our own internal policies, we're prohibited from assisting them in any way in their. Operations that they're dealing. So I don't see it being an issue.
Okay.
Yeah, I I I'm glad you hear that, not because of what the issue is, because I think it destroys and damages credibility of of the groups that are here afterwards. With the community, they do a lot of harm to that kind of community building and folk, like they've worked so hard and so well on. Thank you.
And I just wanted to comment, I know your uh, family friends were students that um, lost and my heart goes out to your family.
Yeah, thank you for sure.
Yeah, we we see. The work of being, you know, these uh, state ways and many situations, that's.
Yeah, we've been hit hard in the last five years. So.
Yeah.
We've had six students um, in the last five years that we've lost and. You know, it's one of those things, we try to educate um, people. Young people all the time. We're stopping cars, we're trying to talk safety education and whatnot. And so, you know, um. That's just, I think that's a effort that all of us as parents and as community members need to preach. Um, and then also. Um, just when kids need help, please reach out and and uh, we're always here twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So. Um, and I, you know, it's just one of those things that uh, is very difficult for our.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I can leave our staff comments.
Okay, um, wanted to echo the comments about Kid Fest and um, that event was hot, but it's great. Um, DCSO and uh, Fire District, they get the kids, of course. Um, making off the rock or participating in the groundbreaking ceremony for the new community park there. Um, that's exciting. A lot of folks from the football.
Making uniforms.
But a great partner up there and um, cities all been with the financial support um, and we both being. Good neighbors to our new community of recreation center there. So uh, that was great. Um, speaking of kids, uh, we had third graders here uh, this week, uh, which is always. This is a lot of fun. Um, and we were kinda talking after the T L A presentation about youth engagement and. We dropped that number down, you know, uh, even younger, the third graders are super engaged. You ask them now. What would you want in a park or playground? They got ideas. So somehow we need to harness that energy for maybe the, you know, eighteen to forty year olds and, you know, ask the right questions.
Maybe we have that younger. What the acronym. Forward, what court can then talk to those third graders? What what they wanna see and what they'd like to see. Well, this is our information ambassadors to younger teens, right? Yeah, they all look like they were very happy to be here. I'm not kidding. I stuck my head to the door and went, oh, okay.
Yeah, um, yeah, that was, that's great. And but it is a reminder that. There are ways, you know, to reach different audiences and I think, you know, their bottom line, that's either where they are. The mayor mentioned that too. That's always always trying to make things right. So. Even, you know, you gotta approach it from every angle, having by street councils and by street boards and creating those opportunities, but really like. Informal opportunities too, where you're going out and meeting the parents and the kids and the families of the. You know, working parents and stuff where they're at um, and making it informal. So it's easy to participate rather than, hey, you can fill out this application or. You know, listen to an hour presentation before you can, you know, uh, make comments on something, but. Um, can be a tricky balance. There's a lot of things that we want input on. It's complicated. Our own growth boundary. How do you wanna grow? It's a simple question, but there is a lot of fire behind that, right? Um. So, you know, we have to balance of like, how do we write the right communications, get the right engagement, that people can understand and feel like. Something, the contribution that, you know, is backed by some well thought out ideas and things like that. So. We'll continue to work on that. That was that was uh, pretty cool uh, to do that presentation tonight. Um, uh, it's the lieutenant mentioned, we have the the rodeo this week. So um, yeah, there's gonna be activity. Uh, as usual, uh, at this time of year, we know, um, you know, music will be going later. Uh, they, you know, tone it down after ten P M to. Sixty-five D B S. Um, and lieutenant knows, if that means now that. Uh, those calls come in and make a dispatch to make sure that, you know, the now gets turned down. Uh, but. A lot of celebrations will happen this time of year. Um, that's all for permitting, which they're allowed to do during.
They're all going to one o'clock in one.
They are, yeah, three nights and one, which.
Can be fatiguing for residents. I understand that. Um.
Yeah.
Especially when when you own a house, it's right down two streets that point at two different large music venues. You could. You have to close the windows, you stereo, but they're not the same house, not the same song.
Maybe hand out your lungs this time of year. Or you could just go enjoy it in the fun.
Actually, I'm doing that this meeting.
We have the community, the second community conversation on health assistance coming up on June uh, twenty fourth. Recreation Center. Uh, that'll be at five P M. Um, this is the presentation of the action plan. Give feedback on that as well, with many partners will be there. Um, you know, we'll put out post releases, information on the website about that. They actually write it and publish. Um, so I would expect another nice turnout, good turnout for that. Um, and hopefully it operates. Probably can get one too if I discover. Um, but we're looking forward to having that conversation. Um, yeah. We all work together. It's a difficult issue. Uh, okay, so I have a question, council. Um. Legislative session is coming to almost close here this month. Um, there's obviously a lot of bills that are related to the cities. L C is sending out a lot of information to public get about some of these uh, priorities. Uh, a lot of you were, you know, I've taken a stance on. Uh, this week is the place on the transportation package. Um, of bill twenty twenty-five. We must set that one aside for for that number aside for that twenty twenty-five, but um. You know, this is a big priority for the L C. It was one of the top five priorities to the city council. Um, and just gauge your interest on whether the City of Sisters weighs in on this. Um. You know, the uh, from our standpoint, you know, we. Have priorities for out here. Obviously, we're dependent upon that filing and maintaining payment on having twenty. So we're both operations made. It's very important. Plus the small city allotments that, you know, we put in for every year for brands to get projects funded here locally. Um, and then of course, the big capital projects I found about that all the traffic and and safety areas. Um, safe routes to school, all those things, those options are also funded. But so. This is a big bill, big investment. I understand the the conversing discussions about this, but. Um, if you haven't seen the detail, we have the gas tax increase, um, fifteen cents is the proposal, so ten and five or. Uh, over the next couple of years, uh, seventy dollar increase in title fees, fifty dollar increase in registration fees. Uh, there's a payroll tax increase. Twenty percent, um, and then transfer taxes on vehicles. Um. So, you know, if there was interest in in wait and we were focused on our needs here, I'll benefit us. Um, yeah. Uh, the geographic equity generations of a lot of this funding, that's get funnel to big projects in the valley, but. Um, we wanna make sure the projects are also funded here locally, you know, and support as well. Um, there's no, you know, you don't have to weigh in at all, because it was a priority council. When we talked about legislative priorities, just wanna make sure you're aware of that tomorrow would be. The the hearing for city. So basically when the city should weigh in would be at the hearing tomorrow. But we would just say no, that or just. Sorry to roll this one out.
I mean, we we have two options. One, we could do a letter as city or second, we could just participate digitally. If we wanted to, you know, so I mean, there's.
Well, I'm comfortable with every group decides. Um. The gas taxing, gotta hold my nose on that, but. I think that that, well, we, but I'll tell you what, we've got to consider too, and I'm gonna, don't want to forget it. If that should come in, it really emphasizes the fact, and for me to say this before, but those like a charging station, then and ones over here. There's gotta be a charge over, they can't be free. Because that just creates even more animosity among the people that are paying the higher taxes. And we need to ask those folks. I realize it's gonna be an increase on electric cars and things like that, probably mileage. Uh, but I haven't seen that proposal yet. So, uh, so I'm in favor of supporting it. If the council is not, I would support it in a potential.
Yeah, and if there is individual, you know, usually the policy rules around that is stating that, uh, you know, I'm speaking on behalf. Of myself and not as a council as a whole, just to make that.
Well, if this is the small cities portion of the thing, there's nothing wrong with us coming together and saying, well, we're a small city. Let's let's make sure at least that, whether we agree on the other parts.
I don't need a five billion.
I don't think, I don't think that matters. I think that, I think what it matters is we want that part of it, which. They gotta keep the test, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it has to. Our groceries come through there. Our tourists, winter tourists come through. It's it's public safety issue. We have to, we have to hold him to that.
Yep.
Um. We're not, we don't have to speak on the whole, but we just say, here's the small city stuff and here's the things that we need, bam, bam, bam. And then first sign with something like that. And as a city, and I think it's stronger as a city.
I do too.
If three out of the five of us can say, yeah, we'll sign the letter, that's enough, right? So. I think that's what we should do. I I don't mind you crafting it and having this come and whatever, or having the mayor sign it. You're around tomorrow to do that.
Is that how, is that how that can work? We're we're just focused on what portion of this bill?
Is that effective?
I mean, you can submit a neutral, you know, usually it's support opposition neutral, but you submit, it doesn't matter. Oh, better. Um, you know, you can some, put it in support call, but narrowly have your, you know.
A narrow soap of the comments, if, cause it is the small city.
Well, I mean, so the highway, you know, fund uh, would obviously increase. And we, cities get a lot of the twenty percent of the same highway. So our portion per capita will go up, just like it did with two thousand seventeen, get a lot more state gas now.
Maintaining the fifty, thirty, twenty split. So if the state gets fifty percent of the money, counties get thirty and then cities get.
Right, and it keeps and it keeps the funding for the small city allotment program, which communities under five thousand can apply for matching.
But I think a letter can craft that that speaks to the things that are important to us.
Yeah.
We support this package because these are things that are important in Central Oregon. You know, any package does include these is all the, you know, we 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 have needs, we have passes to keep open. We have roads that we see a lot more where in the wintertime than the roads in the valley do.
And we just want our share fair enough, fair square.
And they can put a ferry on the Malibu as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, and then the um. Yeah, it's it's not perfect, but you know, it happens with the baby out with the bathwater, but. You know, I don't, you know, I think the payroll tax um, to pay for transit is a little weird, however. Um, you know, research and presentations I've seen is that, you know, places that benefit from these transit dollars the most are rural communities. Like, hands down. The the other communities like in Portland's. Larger cities, you know, it's a pay to play system, you know, there's fairs and it doesn't cover their whole system, you know, they get subsidies, but. The the rural um, areas and we are a rural area, um, are almost completely subsidized and it's, you know, coming, it's coming from this.
District is heavily subsidized through payroll tax as well.
Yeah.
Bob County here next month, but it's a conversation that will then. This, this wouldn't make a difference for C T, right? So when we're talking about our transportation hub. And additional services to sisters. Um, you know, this bill would help. The little transit gets funded through.
Yeah, which is, which is something that, you know, we're constantly faced with affordability and we always focus more on housing, but there's all of these other. Secondary tertiary costs.
Little houses, we want that people can get around. And and that's why part of this bill, like the gas tax increases are really. Not, well, because the, A, we drive out there further than, you know, we have longer commute times. Commute distances sometimes on how, not times, they're faster. Um, so there are parts about the bill I really hate, but at the same time, we have to stand up for a. If it's a fifty, thirty, twenty split every time, we have to make sure that we get our. And and they ever talk about, well, let's take, uh, cause they did talk about it at the beginning of last year, changing that up. And we're like, uh, I think all of Singapore, it was like, no. You know, we can't do that. I mean, it's, it's already hard enough for us if we only got eighteen or sixteen percent or two percent of the money. That means all the money is staying in the. That's cool, so. Um, but I think we should do a lot better and I think we should definitely hit the things that we are most important to us as a city and. I'm I'm for the mayor to sign it for the city for thirteen future.
Yeah, sign with me.
Sound perfect, but you know, yeah.
And maybe, and I haven't gotten a big into annual accountability with it, with the huge issue, do you, do you feel? That what you've looked at, but that's been addressed.
Um, I haven't looked into that probably either, but I know there's a component that they're about on it. I know it's a huge.
Yeah.
There is a piece of that.
Yeah.
And we can say we want that, you know, I mean, just say.
Um, I I just don't feel like to make a decision right now, just because I would wonder any more about it. I've just briefly been looking at what else he sends out that I'd I'd wanna get more information for myself to actually say anything tonight.
Well, you can have a weather that it sound bad, right?
While taking testimony until Friday, you know.
Yeah, so there's a.
There was an issue that they were doing bike pad transit today. Um, testimony until, I'm working on Friday, so.
Yes, I think you do get it like a twenty-four hour period.
So that I think you're not available Friday, probably you're.
Oh, yeah. Because that would be a lot better. Uh, and it's time to touch on our needs and important so.
There's definitely breeze this time.
Okay. Okay, I can.
I just have to vote no because, because what I said.
Yeah.
Well, maybe you can read the draft tomorrow and. I don't know. I know it's a lot, it'd be.
It feels rushed, yeah. Sorry, I wasn't prepared for that.
This is, this is the one that I'm just this old session that this has been talked about when they did the road show. Eight months ago.
Three months ago.
And all of a sudden, now it's like. Waiting for the bill.
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I went to that as a focal reference, you know, this, down again, that was. You would leave there at night. And.
But it is.
Man, it was. Anybody got any other ideas to raise that? So there's other ways. That's a, that's after me.
Right, yeah, that's my biggest.
Yeah.
Next time.
Right.
So. You have what you need?
I do, yeah. Thank you.
I hope you sleep better.
Right, then I. Maybe so, um, it's a long ride back. We do uh staff up.
Do I need my tissues? No.
You can hear that probably heard. You know, that's what happens when you don't issue leg chains.
Yeah.
Leg chains. Leg leg chains and balls to hang on to that, because they can escape out the door.
We didn't work on our engagement.
Yep. Sure. Yeah, we're excited for she guys, good opportunity.
Yeah.
Also to.
She's good.
Yeah, each opportunity. And that what she's providing for the city, which is great work.
She's been a good ambassador.
What's that?
She's been a very good ambassador.
Been a good ambassador.
I'm I'm glad we had her as long as we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's such a bright, bright shining star, gonna be doing stuff, then I'm glad you see.
And you know, we talked about youth engagement, this speaks very highly of an internship program that we got around.
Yeah.
Where there's still an existence anymore, but you know, quality people do come from things like that and and we certainly found them.
Yeah.
You know, so her last day is Friday, June forty, yeah. So it's kind of quick, we're gonna will goodbye Washington Forest, so if you got to. Come by, that'd be great.
Yeah, please let us know so we can decide.
The twentieth?
Yeah.
Oh, it's 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 a uh Le Pine, that's the small, small cities lunching.
Well, maybe you can come by anytime and say goodbye, you know.
Goodbye, darkness.
Yeah, is it is it possible for the uh. Public Works Manager, we get him to air movie, which one?
Getting stuffy up, yeah, we got another meeting to go. For it, right?
Yeah, yeah. So just moving along here, uh, we had our Parks Board meeting last week, uh, we're on a semi, uh, every other month schedule right now. Uh, because it's just not a whole lot of park items to justify during every every month, but. We gave them an update on the Northwest Park Master Plan process, which was good uh for them. Yeah, we also gave them up to U G B, uh, to kind of share what the discussion has been going on there. Some of the park and trail corridor ideas that have been discussed and moved, so that they're up to speed. Uh, we closed the loop on the East Portal uh decision, I think they've heard it, you know, uh, want to make sure that they knew what the uh, what the decision was. Sisters Gateway. What are we calling it officially? You have to be careful here. We have transportation hub. And maybe.
Just called Mobility Center, and several people say, are you building something for folks in wheelchairs over there? I've heard that question so many times.
Can you say that again? Sisters Gateway.
Sisters Gateway. Right now, there's Gateway Hub, Transportation Hub and Park, eventually.
Transportation.
We can't call it a park yet.
Yes.
Or, you know, there are a number of different ways to word that, but totally just the funds.
Yeah.
But one would hope that maybe someday thirty years from now, you could call it just the gateway park. But and we could call the transportation access to build like that or something like that. But that may be thirty forty, it's on the obvious, make make a base. So we also got some, uh, received some public comment at the meeting from uh members of the Dark Skies Committee. Who wanted to kind of plant the seed of a concept that they are interested in, which is to. Uh, have one of our parks uh be designated as Dark Sky Park. Where uh locals and tourists can come and uh has the infrastructure available for people to come watch the stars and. So they just wanted to kind of. Bridge that that topic with with the park or with the 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 Parks Committee and at some point we'll circle back with them and kind of. Figure out more what that really means in terms of, it doesn't sound like a lot of additional infrastructure, but like. Platforms need some maybe some interpretive signage, you know, that kind of explains some of the stuff, uh, so.
Get a hip on for me. So, yeah, please run over with that, whatever.
Okay. Side unseen.
Well, they agree, I mean.
I'll have one more to say about a during during council comments. We'll we'll bring something back, we'll have them bring something back, that's usually what we do with those kinds of. We like.
Yeah, I'm interested.
Branch, branch the the topic uh internally with the staff, uh, to kind of understand better what the infrastructure needs are and. And then we work with their parks board and the council, so. But uh, it continues to have legs, we'll bring it forward to you guys. We had a workshop with the planning commissioner last week, is we didn't have any, we don't have any uh big items on. Uh, the agenda right now, so we probably take the event, take the opportunity just to kind of check in with them to see how it's going. Uh, three of the members are are new members, so. Council President was there as well, uh, to sit to do a check in, see if they're getting the resources and the support they need, and apparently they are. Um, they did mention that they would prefer to do in future U G B, U G P meetings separately. Uh, they felt like there were just too too many people at the table and they didn't feel like they had enough chance to really offer their.
They're speaking of the joint meeting, yeah.
Yeah, that you do, so I had thought that maybe we we would just do that again, but uh, I'm thinking now it would probably be better to keep them separate. No offense, but uh, they they just felt that that would be more efficient to to do it that way, I think we will. Try to look for other opportunities where we can have more general discussion, getting the planning mission and council together. Um, they should kind of keep, kind of exchange information and ideas. So. Anyhow, uh, we're also uh starting to receive uh short term rental uh operating license applications coming back in. They're due in July first, we sent notice out to a hundred and twenty or so uh that we have. Uh, starting to get them back in, uh, we're definitely, we're putting more of an emphasis on uh making sure that they comply with the uh. The criteria. Uh, for one reason or another, that that wasn't as much of a point of emphasis in the past, but I'm talking about things like uh. The notice to the neighbors, uh, you can make me send a notice out to them, the neighbors with interpretive fever, they can post a sign. Uh, for an emergency contact and to let folks know they're, they have an issue that they can contact, who they can contact. Uh, making sure that they have all the fire and and safety equipment uh recommended to be uh onsite. Uh, proof of insurance, uh. And things of that nature, so it's, it's a little bit, it might be, you might hear some of your constituents. Uh, it's, there's nothing new, it's not new requirement, it's just, it's just more emphasis on these requirements, so we're taking steps to. Help people through that process this year, and hopefully it'll be a lot smoother next year.
Is there a difference between owner occupied spaces and not owner occupied places, S D Rs? Because that, there again, as on the S D R thing, there's differences between running down a room and running down a lot. Donor occupied ones, uh, that might just be ran out of room. They're there all the time, so uh you don't have to call anybody, you just have to say, hey, you know, so um. The next time, and I don't think we have any rush sending on the S D Rs. The next time we, if we crack it again, I think we have to have some of these discussions, well, maybe separating those out somehow. So there's a little more um difference between the actual business or somebody that's just kind of just doing a tiny bit of supplement when it comes to owner. I think that's uh, because I think the new difference, I think the insurance, insurance is different. I mean, if it in in a owner occupied S D R, it's just a guest in your home, maybe you're there all the time, so you're there to monitor. And it's different, like it doesn't, anyway, that's just.
Have there been any uh S D R license requests on? That have been denied uh because of the new. Cover, would we say five hundred feet now, five hundred buffer increasing?
Uh, not, not denied in the sense that people have applied, uh, and then found out later that they didn't meet the buffer. We usually try to pre-screen those things out before they get to an application stage, but yes, there have been a few of those. Yeah. Next set of meetings on the U G B, we're we're planning, we're planning those as we speak, uh, with the idea of getting the steering committee back in late July. Uh, to review the uh concept they have got to be in more detail, uh, to give them that opportunity to. Kind of fine tune what what their preference is and then pass it on to the planning commission, which we're targeting August twenty first. To have that discussion, the council probably will be in early September at this point. Haven't heard anything on the, uh, in terms of the decision on the rezone yet. Uh, we thought we'd have something by now, but uh, we we keep refreshing the uh, the screen and. Every every couple hours and still haven't seen anything on that, uh, I'm not sure why, but uh. I guess they're still within their timeframe. Uh, the Northwest Park Master Plan, I kind of touched on that, I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware where where we're at with that. We've had our initial outreach efforts uh with stakeholder, stakeholder interviews of uh. Agency reps and concerned citizens and uh neighbors of of the. Site that uh we wanted to get their input on, uh, so that was very valuable, and then we also did the open house. Several weeks ago to get uh community input. And then the next step is to start the three concepts uh based on that input. Uh, and bring them back to the Parks Board first in August and then the council, we were talking about uh extra stuff you can take to. Get more feedback on those concepts from the public, uh, if it's a survey or some kind of online open house, uh, to make sure that uh. If they have the opportunity to participate in that. Think with the, with the eventual. Goal of getting some kind of final uh concept, agree upon concept by the end of the year. There is a, there's a Matt Martin, uh. Principal Planner had set up a a project website on the city's website with with this information, if you are interested in in checking it out, it's it's. It's available, probably best thing to do is do a search of park and on home screen, find that's the best way to find information. So, that's it, any other questions?
Yeah.
I'll see, thank you.
That's it.
Nice, so we recently completed the twenty twenty five overlay. Uh, crews also completed the uh street striping for that and are in progress on the thermal plastic crosswalks. Uh, Saint Helens, I believe, is the only road that still needs uh crosswalks to put in place, they're coming getting that tomorrow. Uh, East Portal, the restroom and the kiosk, got a fresh coat of paint. Uh, crew is going to be uh putting in some baby changing stations in those. Um, dump station, bulk water fill stations are ready to go. Uh, getting some new stone sliding for the exteriors uh that are compliant with our dark sky code. Uh, all in an effort for a July first soft open. Uh, Barclay Drive, got some asphalt on it today, uh, a little bit more tomorrow. And then next week, striping, a little bit more concrete work to finish the sidewalks. Um, hoping to have the new traffic pattern go into effect uh for the intersection at Barclay Locust slash Camp Hope. Friday, uh, the twentieth, so next week, Friday.
Um, are you aware of the negative feedback on Facebook page, stuff like that, about the outside, people not seeing that?
We are aware, we corrected it first thing Monday morning.
Yeah, I want to make sure I got a lot of beef on that.
And we are going to. Make it very obvious when we do uh have the new traffic pattern going to effect.
Yeah, is it, is it going to be closed until that time? That little portion on Barclay, or is it open again? I mean, you just put the asphalt on it, right, so it's probably going to be closed until Friday, so that stop sign isn't necessarily um.
We.
Useful yet.
We we put a trash, we put a trash bag over it.
Okay.
Taped it off so that nobody can see it.
Okay.
But when we're ready.
Yes. Just making sure, I know you guys are doing.
I took the trash and I bought and spray painted it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, something we we don't do here in Oregon that we did in Southern California, not that I'm saying we like California. But I noticed when I moved here, it was that um California, they paint stop on the. Right, right on the asphalt with a line, and I became so dependent on that. When I came here and didn't see it anymore.
Now that you're blowing through the intersection.
That was me, yeah, um, is there ever talk about that, is that just?
It will be, we will be doing, if it don't cloud.
Oh.
That that wasn't any original plan, um, but we are going to do that.
Okay.
And we have done that, some of the newer uh stops such as uh.
Great, yeah, I think it really helps, and I I realized that the weather here. It it makes it tough because you got to repaint and that so forth, but.
We, I I heard they they got rid of the stop, they put in spike strips.
I didn't take people's stuff. Well, the California roll, man.
It is.
Just to make sure we are going to put up our full out stop signs more eye level. Right there where the permanent stop sign is, just until people get used to it.
That was really helpful with this, the flashing one that was put on May, since it was new, that seemed to grow help. Anything to get people's attention, get them off their phones, they're voltage asking while they drive.
Look at the airplanes. Yeah, so there should be. Coming up to that intersection by the different uh devices, letting a driver know that there's a stop there.
Run towards. Be gone.
Not this one, fuck, then we get the place, but there's too many.
I want to show with the spell.
For the Edgerton Road Transmission Line, uh, we're currently in the thirty day public notice, uh, we are nearing the end of that public notice window. Um, and we estimate, or we have been given the estimate for the N E B analysis to be completed sometime late summer, early fall. So more updates to come as that approaches, uh, Elm Street Multi Use Path. Uh, C E C has continued to do the tree work uh in order to install their conduits and bolts. Uh, that will go in before our new path and pedestrian bridge. Our engineer is working with uh the bridge designer uh to figure out the footings. And how to get uh those C E C uh conduits through the footing so they can be uh underhugged from the bridge.
Are these additional or? There's moving down or?
I believe it's uh connecting to a transmission line uh south of town. For that, I think terminates right there at city limits on Elm Street, if I remember correctly.
Everything. We're, this is kind of working together.
Working together. Yeah, I believe it's a form of redundancy, we're bringing power, so. We're just kind of waiting for the peak demand season to end because we don't want to take any wells offline during the summer year. The uh North Locust Safety Improvements uh out here from Cascade to Black Newt. Uh, we should be hearing about the uh grant results by mid-July.
That was to do a survey or?
It's for the Small City allotment grant through O D A. That was um two hundred fifty thousand dollars with no match, so we got a pretty gross.
My city crosswalks.
We've got that one before.
I believe the last time we got that one, it funded the multi use path on the west side of Pine Street. Uh, the City Hall landscaping, uh, grant reimbursement request for the tree removal and decorative gravel has been submitted, we should be seeing. Uh, that reimbursement very soon. A design consultant has been selected and we're going to be doing a fire and water rise landscape demonstration.
You can um, the votes in the working on article about like the principal space initiatives and so. Do photo shoots, with the bulletin today, and wanted to focus on this building and. You know, that that project, so we'll see what that turns out. Picture me pointing at the, or at the ground, where there's nothing to see yet, because we haven't started yet. But that that would be good up before. Yeah, look, no, true, yeah.
Yeah, it, very exciting to remove the turf, save some water, have an educational tool for residents. Landscaping for the roundabouts, uh. Preliminary design is in progress, we'll be looking at a final design very soon. Uh, we concluded our outreach with the uh neighboring businesses, uh, those that did respond. And were able to work with our consultants on getting an interview, uh, everybody was very positive about it. Um, I think S P R D just wanted some trees relocated so that they continue to have their signs on the chain link. Um, I think S P R D just wanted some trees relocated so that they continue to have their signs on the chain of fencing. Without those being obscured. Uh, Camp Hope Multi-Use Path. That's um from the Barclay, Camp Hope intersection up towards Sun Ranch. Uh, survey was completed today, I believe. Uh, so we're going to be having a final design very soon. Simple straightforward project and our hope is to have that completed this year. And as uh Jordan noted, rodeo, we'll have the rodeo parade on Saturday. Uh, it will be hopefully the last year of the detour route where uh westbound traffic goes to the north side of town on the alternate route and eastbound through Hood Street, sorry, uh Jefferson. Our hope is next year we can ship uh both east and westbound traffic through the alternate route, uh cutting down on traffic control and just making a lot smoother.
And safety, right?
Yes. And on safety, we will be having uh some extra traffic control staff at the Barclay and Locust intersection, just to make sure folks are continuing the through movement during the detour. That is all I have. If there's any questions.
All of a sudden I don't miss call.
No.
Yes, what do you know, gentlemen? Not much.
Yeah, we're not done yet. Uh, so just a couple of things. Um, yeah, definitely some rough news with, with M D's departure. However, uh we've got a preferred candidate for our project coordinator position. That's which, which we've been, Jackson and I mostly been working on that the last few weeks. So that's great. Uh, we're just gonna go through some of the final stages of that recruitment. And then we also have some interviews for a seasonal. Uh, that's gonna be on Friday. We actually had one this morning, uh and those uh were look like fairly positive candidates. So we're excited about that. And then we'll obviously be actively recruiting another planner here probably in the coming weeks.
Is that like a Robin Duke plan or what?
Yeah, so if you remember during the budget process, we do have actually a U T that's, that's still vacant. Um, so the idea is maybe to bring someone on in the seasonal capacity, kind of give them a working interview perhaps, and then potentially bring them on full time. Or bring uh someone else on full time, kind of in maybe that tour time period. So, yeah, I mean, we can, you know, we have the allocation for the position and, and we could use the help in the field. So um and I think that right now we just, we had some kind of strong candidates, which is, which has not been the case for us honestly in the in the time I've been here for a seasonal. So uh fingers crossed in that, on that front. Um, and then yesterday we met with our insurance agent for our insurance renewal, some really good positive um conversations there. Instead of, uh if you remember, it was about five percent we were projecting as an increase. It's gonna be about three. So that's great. And uh, you know, some good trends in the market. Um, like I said, also in the budget meetings, we've kind of leveled off with our replacement costs of assets, which is good. Um, and then certain things on cybersecurity, our premium there um is actually down a little bit. That market's kind of leveled out. It was kind of a hot one there for a little while. But more um insurance carriers are getting into that market. So it made it a little bit more competitive, which is good. And then kudos to our staff, especially Public Works. Our workman's comp um premium actually went down by a couple hundred dollars. So um that was really encouraging as well. So um, yeah, overall, good conversation. That's always one you never know about until you kind of have it and see the final numbers. So, because they're, they're, they're large. So it's uh, it's just gonna have those conversations.
Well, the only person in town that's had a positive insurance conversation.
Right. And I did ask that. I asked about the, you know, the replacement volume fires. He's like, well, you know, we're just not seeing that, that big of a, of a hit or exposure to us in the, in the pooled cities that they, that they draw from um. And school districts is what they also work with. So, yeah, good news at least.
Defensive space is working already.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, that's um, other than a few other uh things, those are probably the major things we've been working on. So that's a lot happened. Let's see, have any questions for me?
Again.
Yeah, let's approve another budget. Thank you.
You're talking to the wrong meeting, my friend.
Okay, Mayor Council Business.
Sure. Um, I love the youth conversation around here. Um, I broke down three things, you know. Youth participating taking into the budget, sending aside money doesn't have a problem for it. I mean, I don't know why it's quite. I don't think we can put a lot of energy into that because get funded and they will come, someone will come up with a good idea about how to you know, I said best, I'm in short, you know, sorry. I, I'm in favor of getting the schools involved and having, you know, better events outside this building. To go, I mean, I think that when the council goes to the school, how, go to the high school and do, you know, meet a class, a civic class or something. Would be easy, be super, super easy. It's just our time. Hey, we got money. Uh, oh my God, four other things. Um, I was at the P C meeting. It was great because it was a recap of the first half uh, uh, the last half and then kind of a here's what's coming. And I just wanted to add a couple of things that Scott said, which is that, you know, they really didn't like the joint meeting because they, we may have unintentionally overpowered our voices are a little stronger and we're used to it because we're out here a lot and public officials and I think that they would have rather had their own meeting so they could get their views in and then you see what they say and they're probably. Um, and uh they are also looking forward to um getting another bite of the apple on efficiency measures. They mentioned that and they thought it's like well, you know, let's look at it again because we're always, we should always kind of be looking. I'm thinking, well, that's what I, I told them that, that's what, that's what you're here for, you know. If you, if we're not giving you what you want, you can always try and work with Scott and find out some other things that we haven't talked about. We'll see what happens. I think um the liaison position is working very well in that regard because they give instant feedback from you on the subject. Um, and I'll top a lot of it. It just
I had a conversation with a P C member last week and they were saying how yeah, I think the workshop, they were looking forward to that, that kind of two on things and discussed amongst themselves, but also um, the ability to think bigger, vision, you know, and stuff like that. So it sounds like they have, they're um addressing those topics.
Yeah, I think they're a super thoughtful crowd and, you know, um um, you know, those, what if you're reporting, they're pretty new and, you know, they're bringing their own thing to the, the point was great.
I'm grateful, honestly.
Yeah. Um, my next time, can I mention our, we, you know, we talked over coffee, can I mention that a little bit? Okay, um, we talked about safe parking a little bit and I think that um, you know, I know there's a lot of stuff and a lot of moving parts to all homeless conversation, there was a lot of committee that's known and stuff, but um, I think uh one area is that um we can probably all agree on is there's not really a place for transitional housing happening back here. And I think that um, you know, Sarah and I had a couple of conversations, she's been reading and seen some things that are working pretty well. And I think we could scale some of that down here. And um, it doesn't have to be a lot, but I think if we provided the framework to let other people work within I think there's some fairly somewhat simple things to do. I mean, it it's as simple as they come because you're gonna need other people and partners and all that stuff. But if we were able to find some kind of little framework for taking that four or six vehicles out of the forest on civic property or authorize other properties, uh, other authorized property, I think is something that although we don't have it specifically in a home, I think we need to attach it to the goals we already have or
I think we should have a goal.
Do we, yeah.
To create a safe parking for anyone.
Yeah, so I just, I just had a great conversation with Sarah, I've been talking for couple hours, um, and uh over coffee and I was just really encouraged from what she told me and it just kind of, kind of we might thinking about maybe we need to speed that up mostly for winters come. And we could get four or six people out of the forest or whatever, people that are on a path. That'd be awesome, right? So I'm just throwing this at you guys to maybe talk to her and have a conversation and what, you know, because I think she's doing great stuff.
Yeah, and I think the, the group who, um, worked for us with the acronym.
S C L I.
S C L I.
But then too many acronyms, right? They just come out. They would, they would, I think, could be very helpful in trying to identify those individuals that might be a very good candidate for safe.
Yeah, I think there are partners out there in the range or, or those guys.
We're not, we're, we're not, we don't have to be the group that tries to decide who's appropriate.
No, I think we just, again, and I think that that's kind of our job, right? We just create a framework for other people to just go in there and just fill it up and be successful. Check back in with this, make sure it's working good and then all of a sudden things are happening. And right now, unfortunately, we first you know, there's no affordable housing yet, but that's coming. So if we start to make a framework for the transitional part of it, so some of those people can go from A to B to C. I think that there is a strong chance that we can help some, some families that have been there a long time or working towards that. They just don't know how to do it. So that's that. Um, anybody want to talk about round barner?
Sure.
I mean, we have Scott to pack it this week. Um, the, the one thing I'll say about it.
Oh, I was gonna say that um, I think we are uh scheduled to meet with somebody in regards to that meant to be
Yeah, yes. I mean, and I'm just, I'm encouraged because the one thing I like about it is somebody's trying to do some, and it's a, a local option and it's
It's, it's well done. It's well presented.
Yeah.
And I, but yeah, it's a little ahead of, and I told him that when we gave to you the other day.
Yes.
A little ahead of the, the curve ball here.
Yeah, well.
We're gonna have a process and certainly this will be considered as part of the process.
Right. I mean, I think that um, oh, it's good. I just want it on everybody's radar because I think this is a place where you know, we could go faster if we wanted to together, if we make it, if, if there's a you know, and we'll see. Got a letter today and you guys may have seen that uh about sidewalk safety on, in the downtown core.
Yep.
Um, just want to think about that a little bit. Uh, I don't know what the rules are for scooters and skateboards downtown. I know that there was a rule years ago that didn't allow it. Is that still in place?
That's a great question. Okay, is that?
I think we're all asking all that years ago and that there aren't any regulations on bikes or anything on sidewalks.
I think we could make a case where for pedestrian safety is to not have bikes, at least on the downtown core or the.
Well, now that we have e-bikes, e-scooters and people zipping around with a good clip, even these little razors that have a battery pack in them, move along pretty fast. They have a front on the one wheel, she rides it on the sidewalk. Um, so I, I think that, yeah, we need to think about how you word that. But I'm not sure how you're gonna enforce it, but at, at least we might be able to, I mean, I obviously in Savannah, when you walk into the major park, uh Folsom Park, where there is a Savannah, they have a big corridor down the center. And when you get to that corridor, all the paths say just not, no bike, scooters, whatever. You can ride your bike up to the path. There's other, there's other places. When you get to that center core. There's, there's a sign at every single intersection painted on the asphalt and a sign that, that, you know, shows people getting off. This says, don't do it. Now, people ignore it clearly, but at least then there's the ability for Lieutenant Davis or somebody else to say something or this isn't safe.
Or if there is a um bike pedestrian collision, someone gets hurt, you know, at least if there's something in relation, you can at least cite somebody for it.
Yeah.
Um, because look what you've done person. So you're uh mayor, you're the bike kind of the bike head, you know, it's your realm. If you have ideas, you know, I can talk to you about it or or just bring them to the group or whatever, because I know that you work in that realm a lot more than I do. And I'm not trying to say, hey, let's slam, you know, I'm not, I just think that there's probably some common sense rules, so we can come up with that or not. To, or you mean, you know, maybe it's just on Cascade, I don't know. Uh, but I'd love you guys to think about that and um that, that business owner is contacting me three times. And I told them to, I told them to show everybody in the council your concern because one person can't do anything. It's we can discuss council. So I just wanted you to see that and just highlight that part. Um, you know, we'll see what happens.
I was gonna offer, we, you know, the Caesar Business Association might be since they're downtown to Locust, maybe something that we can work with them on. Um, all Caesar signs, uh, son of river, trying to go through a tunnel, you know, one of the bike, right? Uh, I can see why we don't have a policy because so many of our sidewalks are shared, well, that purpose pathways, right? Where they're eight or ten feet and we want bikers and walkers. So if we don't want to confuse people like, wait, can I ride a bike on side? Like this is looks like a cycle, you know?
But I think Cascade is unique enough.
It is. And it gets very crowded in summer. There's negative conflicts, you know, between kids on, you know, skateboards that are electric now and, you know.
Well, that's the fact that there, there are no bike lanes on Cascade because of the more of these in the street and the parking. It's kind of a you, it's, we're kind of in a quandary because we have a place and go. And we're telling.
And we want it to be done and we want it instead of cars.
Vert to the other roads. Um, yeah, the right group and but if they're going to, it's like a business.
If they're going to.
They park their bike walk, right? Any more, maybe work, bike parking.
We need more work.
We need more.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Anyway, I'm just, I'm just highlighting the letter. Wanted to make sure you guys read it and.
I read it.
You know.
No, and I think that's a great point because, you know, the community is growing, we're getting more tourism. This is something that, you know, maybe wasn't a big issue a few years ago, but it is now and will continue to be. So this is the time to to address it before it becomes.
And the other thing I'd like to say is, you know, um, I like to go back to the age you, uh, you know, stuff that we're doing within the community. And we just want people to feel comfortable coming down Cascade because that's the busiest sidewalks we have. But that's all, that's where a lot of the, that's just where it's at. So we just, I think we have to be mindful of it and maybe come up with something, maybe we don't. I don't know. Anyway, that's it.
You know, could we use the alley as the alternative bike group? That alley from Cascade University is.
I, I think it's not just bicycles though. I mean, there's like these uh, these things that didn't.
Oh, I know, I've never seen, yeah, but I, but I'm not insurance, but that could be potentially the wheel transportation corridor for e-bikes and stuff like that to move around.
So it'd be a long-term vision, but I can see the conflict with vehicles and everything being very difficult. You got a mid-block crossing, crosswalks, parking there.
So we just send out railroad, railroad crossing.
I think we just had to be.
Your light.
I'm sorry.
Well, you're nuts. How about you, Josie? You two are in the same room. I swapped your names.
I only noticed because I've had this name for fifty-four years.
Perhaps you should just magnet it, stick it on your.
Yeah, I would love to hear about the community box era. So um, I'm leaving some out, but um, you know, Jackson gave a good summary of what's going on with Public Works, but I also really noticed yesterday in the, in the monthly meeting. It's a really strong team, like the, the, the community group that's part of the, the board. I mean, they, they've got some serious background. I mean, super valuable. So I just wanted to share that, like since you don't know till you see it and it's like, wow, you know, it's uh, they're, they're right on par with like they're up, they can speak with our team, which I'm like, I have to ask questions like, what's that? But anyway, just wanted to note that, um, that that's a really wobbly team. Um um, Jordan mentioned the upcoming community meeting on houselessness and if, and Carrie sent out a bunch of information last week, including the action plan. I encourage you to look at the action plan. Um, there's, there's no commitments in there for the city. There's things that we're looking at. It's not like we will do this. It's, this is, you know, possible, but um, just take a look at it and um it'd probably be something that'd be familiar with. I'm happy to talk about it anytime. Hope somebody can make it to that meeting. Michael brought up our con, our coffee conversation and on Monday morning, I was invited to a um, uh, I won't name names just because I'm not sure how public they're ready to go, but it was very um, uh, it was a small community group that got together um, who are starting to look at transitional housing. And when I say transitional housing, I mean anything that's not permanent housing. So that could be a safe parking or tiny homes and things like that. They, they're a group in the community who wants to see that moved forward and I think they're willing to put in some time, effort, money, community, education, things like that. Um uh, I think it was really a, a good place for me or another counselor to be there. And I said, you know, my best role for you is to be a connector. You know, so connect you with other people in the community who are working on different things and also um Who are working on different things and also, um. Advised them that, you know, uh, any of these things are going to likely require some. Code and, and other things to get there. So it's not like you can just build it and. Oh, there it is. I mean, I also advised, um, since it's a newer group who may not, um, understand some of the stations. Advised that remember that we have city land, there's county land, there's forest land. But and uh, I wasn't discouraging, I just was trying to say that, look, there's a framework that all this has to happen in. And then, um, I was able to pass along the information that Carrie sent out to us on Friday. Because I want, and I hadn't wanted to share that until it was finalized and the, that committee was ready to share it. Uh, so I passed that along. Um, they may join. I had to leave the meeting early, so I didn't hear how it ended because I needed to be here for the Monday morning executive session. Uh, but it was actually pretty encouraging. I think, um, there were people. There that are well-known in the community for having level heads. And um, I, I think could be organized and they're, they're part of, um. Some people are part of a faith organization. I think that could be, um, a good partner in the stone. Anyway, just wanted to let you know that started, it is like it, you know, they're just starting. They don't know what they're doing. They're, I, and I mean that in a nice way, they're just storming for me, whatever.
Well, it's great that you were involved at this level, you know, don't wanna get involved when they have six months down the road and they. Yeah, we're in plans and, yeah, this is.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, I, I was, I was, my heart was happy to leave it knowing that they were. Kind of the, another group in the community that has. It's just a slightly different, you know, take on. What else to do? And this is, I mean, this is what's going to be necessary to. Um, move people out, get them stabilized so that they can get the help that they need to go to the next stop. I mean, anything that's done is temporary, so.
Well, and I, I think that you have a good point, the mayor, and that is that being on the ground for that discussion. Keeps a group well-meaning from getting so far down the road. That they come to see us and all of a sudden we're throwing up roadblocks and they feel like we're not in concert with them. We don't wanna help them. Being in the front and we can help to knock those barriers down, let them know where the, the slow parts and the fast parts are gonna be. I just think that's some, thanks for being there. I think that's very, very, very.
I think these conversations are having more in that transitional housing space because there's nothing out there, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, zero chances of success, of really helping people because people need something between. The forest and affordable house.
Right, when we look at communities like Redmond and Bend where they have the ability to. Re, pick a holder towel or, or, or build some small cottages in a cluster that use a common kitchen, maybe a common restroom. They have that luxury of land to be able to do something like that. We're, we're pretty caved in, so we have to look for other partners and other ways. And so I, I'm glad you're there. Like I said, being at the front keeps us from having to pull them back when they get really excited and start rolling forward.
And I did, I did mention that also, you know, not as a discouraging piece, but that, um, one of the places where. Redmond and Bend have had, um. Not a lot, but I mean, they, they do have empty land.
Yes.
They, both the city and the county have empty land. We do not have that piece, but. That doesn't mean there can't be other kinds of land, like private land.
Well, the other thing is that they have empty hotels too. They have older properties. Newport is doing one, they're taking, you know, the hotel property and converting it to. Uh, transitional houses. So I mean, I think that, that it, it's a. We're, 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 we're a wealthy community. It was land poor and facility poor. And we, we can do better.
Yeah, that circles back to the conversation PC had about efficiency measures because there's some things in there that could disrupt those processes.
The cottage stuff, the uh.
S R O.
Yeah.
Yeah, the like.
Sure.
Single resident occupancy dorm, dormitory style, you know, we don't allow that yet, um. Yeah.
This conversation is, um, worlds apart from where we were three years ago.
Oh, my God, yes.
So, and that's a good thing. We're having conversations that actually produce results, not having conversation about. If or.
I don't remember wanting to put another position where I'm ready to resign from this council over what's occurring and happened, as I was. I was within minutes of.
The other thing, um, organizations like that can learn from us is just a little bit of the, the P R side and I, I get all stuff out, you know, that's kind of.
If I may, um, one of the people there, uh, I was like, yes. He said, eh, um, that one of the most important things is marketing and, and I agree and. I think the word I would use is education. And so like educating the community as they move along. Is really valuable. And so, I mean, they, they've got an interesting team, so, yeah.
Maybe I'll, okay. Sure.
Um, so I attended the C O I C monthly meeting. Um, Bob Townsend gave an update on, um. Uh, C T, um, um, and estimated they will have their first bus stop. On June thirtieth and our Gateway Mobility Park. Yeah, um, so exciting stuff there. It's got brand new logos and they're getting new buses and. They even had a one-week free ride just to get people on.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. And, and take an ice cream or something when you got somewhere you were going, they had that too.
She said June thirtieth, but I thought I heard July one was the South opening, so.
That's what I, yeah.
I just.
One. I'm just sharing what, maybe the bus will stop twice.
Thanks, like the buses will come, move the cones, you know, so.
Just tell them to run over the cones.
Um, I. Uh, Merv was out here again yesterday, um, kind of an interesting thing that's happening for the second time now. Um, where an employer reached out to Merv and said, I'm looking for somebody and it happened to be Holy Kakao. Um, looking for somebody to work their production line. Um, they asked if, um. Uh, I could help them connect with some of our houseless community on that, that job. Uh, so I did forward the email out to a couple connections here in town. That, uh, may be aware of someone that could fill the role. Um, anyway, so that's kind of an interesting thing that's going on with Merv. And then Central Oregon Daily News interviewed them yesterday. So hopefully we'll see something in the news, but still trying to get citizens that are looking for help with employment services there. To the van. And I just think it's just taking some time for people to, it, it helps to be consistent as to when they're there. You know, people don't, oh, I know it's the first Tuesday or, um, and I think they're still trying to balance that out, the time, the dates. Um, I did a tour of the food bank. Um, that is being run by Core, now formerly called Core Market and Shelter. And I have to tell you, um, I was just so impressed. Um, so they, uh, have their food bank on Mondays, one o'clock. Um, they are serving about eighty families a week and it works kind of like a grocery store. Where they get a number, they've got a bag, when their number's called, they can go to all these shelves and pull food. And this food is donated from, um, multiple, um, businesses here in town, uh, plus, uh. Seat table and neighbor impact. Um, they are giving out about eight. To ten thousand pounds of food a month, a lot of food. And what really stood out for me was that out of those eighty families a week that are coming in. Only six to ten are, um, houseless. So we're talking the vulnerable.
It's rent, it's rent for food.
Our community, yeah. And there are also residents going to the food bank to get food for their neighbor. Who can't get there or is afraid to go or what have you. And I thought that was really impressive to hear. Um, they also are gonna be putting in some showers and laundry. They've got a guard, community garden with fourteen boxes. On that anybody can, um, grow food and have fun with. They have a clothing closet, they've got a propane tank exchange. Um, I did speak with two of the attendees there at the food bank and they both said that what this has brought them. Is a sense of community and family. That was really special. Okay, um, I also asked, um, well, wh- what can the city do to help? And, um, the response was the recognition that we've been given lately and the inclusion. In terms of like our houselessness committee and things like that has been really, really appreciated. And I thought that was great feedback to receive.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that from Core you were asking?
Yes, this is from Core, Lou and Lori Blanchard and so, yeah. And then, um, they're, they have the same problem all our nonprofits are and that's struggling with getting volunteers. So there's, it's difficult for them to expand the food bank a bit. They'd like to do a second day, but it's all limited to. The volunteers. Um, they also have a community room, um, which has been really helpful too for people. Uh, they're going, they're working with a Clayton, uh, fraternity place to potentially have two apartments fee for transitional housing. That they would coordinate with them. So kind of tying back to the topic you guys were talking about. I, when I left, I thought about a year and a half ago, when we almost lost Gary on council. And where we were at a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
And I just feel like this, this group, um. Has found their place.
Good.
But they can now reach that mission and I'm just really happy to see that. And after all of that, it landed in a good place. So it was a great experience. If anybody hasn't gone, I encourage you and I can connect you with, uh, Lou for that. Uh, I also attended the quilt show kickoff, fifty years this year, eighty-five years. And the city eighty years next year, a lot of anniversaries coming up. Uh, I also went to the urban forestry board meeting and I met with Commissioner Patty Adair. Um, I choose the one commissioner I had not met yet, and Lou's the closest, so it was nice to meet with her and introduce myself. That's it.
Hey, Gary.
Briefly, um, I have, uh, was that the meeting that, uh, the parks board meeting and, and just a quick comment on. The thought they're having on a dark sky. Not necessarily a park, just sort of, but a place. And they mentioned Cliff Clemmons and what they really wanna see is like a platform. Some kind. They look for a place where there's a restroom and things like that. And it's the, they said, they talked about some big events and. And they were very clear, that's not where a big event would be. This would be like, hey, we're gonna have some stargazing, let's come look at the comet tonight. Or let's, you know, check out the Northern Lights or something like that. And I questioned whether it was too bright then. They said, no, it's actually fairly dark. Surprisingly, so you can see an off light, you still see the Milky Way and some of those things. So that would be something they were looking at in town, that would be minimal. And they really look for a platform, so there's a place to put a telescope and know that's secure, flat, level, and that makes it easier to align the band.
Is there a size that, I mean, I, I'm just, I can't, I'm not picturing what you're saying.
Uh, they would take on all the turk and use the whole area.
Okay.
No, no, I think, I think they're talking something probably. I would think it'd be no more than the length of that table and the thick than, and is, as square.
So like eight foot square, ten foot.
Yeah, eight or ten foot square. Those are the ones I've seen where I've worked in the other place. It has to be big enough to put the telescope on. And for people to walk on safely around it.
Yeah.
So there has to be enough for somebody to step off again.
Yeah.
So, okay. But, uh, it, I think it could. Not necessarily, that was the one they mentioned. We also talked about the fact that we were seeing the parks coming online, which we settled U G B issues, have a look at what's going on there. But.
The platform could be almost built into the ground too.
Yes, I don't, I think that would be something to talk of, something we're gonna do. That would be something to have a discussion with. With Public Works about how that might go in to, with the turf and everything else, to remove some of the turf where the irrigation is, where a logical spot is to do it. Um, but again, the thinking is they don't wanna pull big crowds to the, the big crowd events, they're thinking they might have like up, it's a lookout up on two four two. Or, or somewhere else where they, they have the ability to handle traffic. Uh, and second thing was, um. The Parks and Rec Open House, uh, and dedication and ribbon cutting and groundbreaking. They, they did a little bit of everything that day. Um, I will say that they're, they're still struggling with all the space. And what I mean by that is. How to put on an event with a lot of things going on. And they were, they were almost too spread out. Jennifer and I talked about that, but this is their first time. Didn't help that it was about a hundred degrees or a hundred and twenty degrees on the asphalt where they were doing the bikes. Giving away the bike helmets. They were handing out ice cream. I'm not sure how quickly the ice cream melted once they handed it out. And that, the second longest line was the ice cream. The first longest line was a guy doing balloon helmets. And I mean, it was like the length of this room and then some, though, uh, but really well done. Fire department was there, sheriff was there, black police were there, forest service was there.
I was gonna be there, but it was too bad.
As well as a number of service providers, it was hot, as well as a number of service providers and, uh, they did a really pretty good job of wayfinding in the building. They don't have to signage up yet. You can see where they're going. And I think it was impressive how much they've done in the short time they've been in there. That's it.
Okay, thanks. Um, attended the, um, monthly, um, fire emergency management meeting that we host here. And, um, two presenters, one was, um, Forest Service, just on fire weather and, and fire燎原. Um, predictions, uh, that come out, you know, from the weather service, um, other agencies, you know, so, um. Again, kind of, we had kind of a wet winter, but our spring was relatively dry. And good news, bad news from that, you know, I mean, we don't get as big of a rain up, but you know, we're a little bit behind the curve already, um. And then we just got, you know, noticed that there was, we stick, there was a level two evacuation refined this evening, uh. Bumped down to level one, but then fighting fire down the time right now. There's, I think, two big fires in that porch right now. There's evacuations as well, so. Um, here we go. Off to the races.
We got lucky to look at the line of thunderstorms came up.
Oh, yeah.
Have an app that shows them. They, they, they definitely came up through Fremont National Forest, up over Pauline and that area behind and then south of us. So we will, I mean, that's something, that directs moves.
There's only twelve hundred hits or.
Yeah. Um, also C E C gave a presentation, um, kind of updating everyone on their public safety power shut-off process. Um, you know, that's gonna step up based on, um, fire danger. They, they tweak their equipment, so it's more sensitive. Um, as the season goes on and, you know, fire danger increases, so. Um, you know, it's kind of the same story that, you know, the good news is that it could be gets more sensitive, so if something does happen, they're able to. You know, get the power shut off really quickly. The downside is that, you know, it takes a long time to power back up that system, but you know. They can isolate certain sections depending on where it is. Um, and I thought that was just really cool. Yeah, that's great. Yeah, it's very fascinating and, and I mean, and I think, um. You, you might think this stuff of you already, Garrett said, uh, something, and I have a view as positivity as well. Which I feel like, um, I think we talked a little bit about. Um, you know, maybe have a C E C chairman kind of give us a presentation we haven't seen in a while, in an official capacity. Um, you know, he's been president for over a year now, so, um. Um, if I can make the.
Yeah, you wanna actually say what that is or do you not wanna get it?
You wanna wait for me to, or any meeting?
We could, I don't know, you, that'd be fine. Just do a little.
Yeah. Uh, that's. Uh, the only other thing I'll say is I went to the, uh, the beginning of the board of county commissioner meeting this morning, uh, the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. Uh, we gave our annual report, but we also do state sidewalk awards and we had over, um, those are usually people nominated. By friends and neighbors. Um, we had well over twenty. People that were nominated usually get like five or something and we have twenty and we're like, well, yeah, everybody wins. We're gonna celebrate all these people, so, um, and there was, there was a couple people, um, on, and from sisters as well that were. That we got awards as well. So we had, you know, a handful of people actually show up to get their certificates, most of them get mailed, but. Um, that was really fun to meet today, uh, this morning. So I'll leave it at that. And there are other meetings due here, so.
Did you want to talk about the cemetery board letter?
Oh, okay, you might want to do that now. Um.
I'm a thumbs up.
I'm a thumbs up.
Did we all get that letter? Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Now we got it on the. I almost threw something out when you said that.
Did you know we could do that?
Sorry.
Um, all right, I'm gonna do a turn this meeting. And then we get the tech going and start the U R A meeting, and if anybody needs to.